Let us bow our heads, please. While we thank you for a beautiful day that you've given us, and as we look at the agenda before us and the projects give us the wisdom, guidance, and understanding, thank you, Lord, to be able to serve you and this beautiful community in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Robert and Serpy.
Here.
Richard Donley.
Here.
Roger Brunswick. Dr. Craig.
Here.
Chairman Kerlander.
Here.
James Worster.
Here.
Russ Winn.
Here.
Before we proceed, member Roger Brunswick is absent. He had a funeral, and he's going to see if he will be here before we adjourn for the next cases, but he apologizes to everyone for not being here. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the June 25, 2019 meeting?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second, but I'd like to make a...
We have to have a discussion here, so you want to...
Why don't you begin, because you have the bigger part. Mine's a little...
So, I thought we had agreed with the minutes that we were going to go to the short form, and now it seems we're back to the longer form. And the problem that I have with the minutes is that when you point out what a member says, you're missing the whole context of it, and sometimes it even gives an erroneous meaning to what was actually intended. So I would, with permission of the Board, request that we go back to the short form, which I've discussed with you, Counselor, before. You said it was perfectly fine that we do that.
Yes.
So, rather than critique these particular minutes, I would just ask that we go back to the short form. You wanted to say something?
Yeah, I suggest that we come to some sort of consistent way to refer to everyone, since it's sometimes "Mr." and sometimes with the first name and sometimes with the member. So I'd like to suggest that all members of the Board be referred to as, like, Member Craig, and Larry as Chairman, and so that we can... I think that's helpful for the future, too, because when people read the minutes, they know that that was a member of the Board speaking. So if we could just do that, that would make me happy.
Any other... Yes, Mr. Worster.
Yeah. All right, I agree, with the exception that when we have a split vote, that we may want to identify in the minutes with the role of why someone voted for or against, simply for the record that goes to the Council.
So what do you think about that?
I mean, I think your concern is valid, that it's either verbatim, but anything in between is editorializing. But if you're going to editorialize or have anything additional, then fleshing out when there's dissent in a vote is probably the most relevant thing to pass on to the Council, particularly when you're talking about issues that are going to be recommended, and we're no longer doing the transcripts.
So, when there's a split vote, there's, in my experience here, that generally there's a point of view on one side and a point of view on the other, not several points of view on each side. You know what I mean? So that you could say they voted for this because, they voted against this because. And that can always be corrected at the following meeting before the minutes are actually adopted if anybody else thinks that their point of view is not... Is that all right, Jim?
Sure, as long as it's in the minutes.
But I think it's a good idea that we... where there is a vote, that the split vote, that the City Council know who voted which way and why they voted that way.
Okay.
So with that... So what... There's a motion now to approve the minutes in a second.
And do we need to amend it for these minutes to say we'd like them revised into the short form, or just go with this one for this time?
Hereafter.
Yeah, from hereafter.
In that case, I'd just like to point out that the comment that supposedly summarizes what I had to say about my position is not really complete, and I would like it to be complete. If that's going to be in there, I don't care if you take it out or put it in complete. Either way is fine by me.
With that...
Yes.
Any further comment? All those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. This is the time for public comment, and we welcome public comment at this time. I want to say one thing, though, with regard to public comment. If you're here to talk about a particular case that's coming before us, I would urge you to save your public comment until after both sides present and before we vote. That gives some context to what your public content... comment is, and I think you're better served if you wait until then. Having said that, however, some people won't be able to stay for the whole meeting or what have you, and you're welcome at this time to come forward and offer any comment you want. Are there any public comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll call the case of the Card Room, the Commercial Plan Development.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Board members.
Good morning, sir.
We appreciate your time and attention to this matter. We understand you have important private lives to deal with, and you're doing this for a public service. My name is George Powell. I'm an attorney with the Naples Office of Ackerman located in the Mercado, not too far from here. I am here representing the Benita Fort Myers Corporation, its parent companies, and the Haveneck family, who are owners of the racetrack facility. We are here today to seek a commercial plan development rezoning, which is going to be presented to you today in two phases. The predominant phase that we're looking for is Phase One, and at the suggestion of the city, we have also incorporated rezoning for Phase Two. I have our team with us this morning, which I would like to introduce, as they will be participating in the presentation before you this morning. And I'm going to present them in the order that they will appear for our presentation. Paula McMichael, who is a planner with Holm Montez. Ted Trish is a traffic engineer with TR Transportation. Rick Barlansky, who is a professional engineer with Holm Montez. Greg DiSario is a landscape architect with David Jones and Associates. And Tom Jones, an architect with Weber Design Group in Naples. I am not going to take up most of your time, as I think the experts really need to do their presentation.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
You want to swear all the witnesses at this point, or you want to swear them individually?
We can keep track. Let's wear them all in at one time and just be done with it.
Right. Do you want to do that?
We can do that now.
So anybody who's going to be a witness for the city or for the applicant?
Anyone who intends to give any testimony today or speak on the record at all, please stand, raise your right hand, and do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Sorry. I would also like to introduce to the Board Scott Savin. Scott is the Operations Manager for the applicant, and he is here in case there are any operational questions as opposed to technical questions on the application. I'm just going to give you a brief interview as to why we're here and how we got here, and a little bit of history. I'm not going to go too far into it, but essentially, dog racing started at this site, the site as you see it now physically, except for the buildings, in 1957. In 1971, the Haveneck family bought the property and continued racing, but they demolished the existing buildings that were on-site at the time they acquired it, and by 1972, they opened a new facility, which is the facility you see today. So that was in '72, so those buildings are about 47 years old. The building on-site now comprises about 275,000 square feet, including the grandstand. The net building... The area of the building net of the grandstand is about 150,000 square feet. Approximately 250 employees work at the facility, and that fluctuates, obviously, especially seasonally, but generally speaking, is about 250 employed at any given moment in the year. The building, as you can imagine, if you've been there, not only is it physically depleted, essentially, but it is economically obsolete, it's functionally obsolete, and it's environmentally completely inefficient. In November of 2018, the Florida voters passed Amendment 13, which outlawed live dog racing in Florida, effective then with a carry forward. So the last track race, the last live dog race at this track will be on Sunday, May 3, in 2020, and after that, that entire operation will shut down. However, Amendment 13 did provide a carve-out for paramutual licensees, which the Benita Fort Myers Corporation is, and it allows these paramutual licensees to continue their other paramutual operations, even though they now have to cease live dog racing. And the two other paramutual operations that they run are simulcasting and the card room. The building just can't continue along as it is. They're going to be losing a substantial portion of their business, which is the live dog racing, and therefore, there's no reason to have or maintain the grandstand or the club room, which has out... lower seating, air-conditioned. So they're looking to abandon that facility and build a new card room at the southwest corner of Benita Beach Road and Racetrack Road. And you will hear and see the posed building, but it's about 30-some thousand square feet. It will provide simulcasting, it will provide a card room, and there will be a restaurant with a bar. It will also be its back office operations for a cash room, transfers, administrative offices. We've been working with the city staff since January of 2019, and we've had a substantial back and forth, and have come to terms on nearly everything. There might be two outstanding issues, which will be discussed this morning. We have agreed that within one year of the certificate of occupancy being issued for the new card room, that they will demolish the facility as you see now, with the exception of some small maintenance buildings in the rear of the property, which are going to be required to maintain the land site that will remain. So the grandstand will come down, the card room will come down, the kennels will come down, and there'll be a remainder of some maintenance buildings. Where the buildings were raised and scraped, they will be replanted, and not in landscape, but there'll be grass put down, so it'll be a field. The existing racetrack oval will continue, and that won't be disturbed yet. So with that, I would like to turn this presentation over to Paula McMichael, the planner with Holm Montez.
Before you do that, Counselor, I have a legal question for both of you. As I read the Land Development Code, on commercial plan developments, residential plan developments, mixed-use plan developments, over 10 acres or over 300 units, a detailed water management plan is required. Now, I know that you phased this, and it's Phase One is less than 10 acres, and... But you're asking to rezone the whole thing, and I also understand that that's a request of the city. And so, can you explain to me where the water management plan is, or why there isn't a detailed water management plan?
Mr. Chairman, it was our intention originally to come in only on the less-than-10-acre site, and as you just commented, the city requested that we address the entire property. What we've proposed for the entire property is no change in the use for the property. We are looking only to be able to continue the temporary uses that have been historically permitted on the site. So there'll be no new construction, there'll be no changes, there will be a series of temporary uses, which have been historically permitted in the past: concerts, carnivals, fairs, things of that nature.
Yeah, and I want to be clear about this as well, and part of the reason why the scheduling of the zoning board meeting took place after the first reading in the ordinance was that because of the city's request. With the implementation of our new comp plan and the quadrant studies, where we are trying to tie in future right-of-ways and reservations for other projects, we asked that the additional 90 acres be... Have those uses that have been historically used on the site delineated, but we also put a timeline on them for coming in in the future, and also put that reservation of the future right-of-way. So to protect the city's interests and the planning efforts that we've been going forward, so that other plans do not sort of take precedent, thinking that there is not a proposed right-of-way at there at some point, because obviously, FDT is looking at the area. So there were a lot of things that were left off of the 90 acres, because we basically asked them, you know, at the 11th hour to please do this, to include it, so that we could have a better picture transportation-wise and future-use-wise of what was happening. And so that's why things were taken out of order, and that's why some of the things that would normally be submitted were not included. Now, the only major change that is going to occur in those 90 acres is, as Mr. Powell pointed out, is the demolishing of the existing building.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
It's a good explanation. Thank you.
I might also add, and Mr. Rooney touched on it, that we have requested that the city assist us in the timeline. The objective of Benita Fort Myers Corporation is to have this facility open on or about the date live racing stops, in order to protect our workforce, and it's very important that we keep this workforce, a skilled workforce, a trained workforce in place. So that's why we've gone to the city and asked them to help us get through this timeline process, and the city accommodated us to that extent.
I also have a question for you, sir. I think maybe you can help. As we read through our presentation, we have... There is a... Call it a development agreement between your client and the city that was signed having to do with slot machines. Can you tell us where that agreement stands today? And it outlined payments back... Penalty payments from the city back to the owners based on revenue from slot machines. Could you tell us where that agreement stands relative to the application today?
As a result of a lawsuit brought by the Seminole Indian Tribe, slot machines were not permitted to be installed here in Lee County, despite the fact that it was passed by the voters, so that's over. To the extent that the development agreement has any remnants, one of the provisions of the development agreement was to rename any future facility from Fort Myers Naples to Benita Springs, and we're still looking to do that, but there will be no slot machines at this site.
Right. So that agreement is void, or just...
I don't know how Mr. Rooney would characterize it, but we're not going to do that development.
All right.
We haven't been looking at the development agreement itself. The main remnant issue, as Mr. Powell pointed out, was the renaming, and that is proceeding forward, so... But not... We're not using the development agreement as the hook on that issue. It's voluntary.
Yes, sir. There's any other comments? I would ask Paula McMichael, who's right here.
Paula McMichael for the record, the Director of Planning for Holm Montez. I don't know if you can see the presentation well enough, or if you'd prefer...
Are you testifying as an expert here?
Yes. Would you like me to give my resume?
Up to you. I mean, the burden is on you, so you can choose to do it or not to do it.
I'm sorry?
Everyone's... Is the new microphones working out for everyone? It sounds a little...
They're not quite loud enough.
Turn them up louder, huh? No, they're...
If I pull it a little closer, does that work?
Especially that one is not loud.
It doesn't move any closer to me, so I'll try to...
I was specifically told not to touch mine.
If we can turn the volume up a little bit.
I have a master's in urban and regional planning from Florida Atlantic University. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Florida Planning and Zoning Association. I'm a member of the American Planning Association. I am also the Chair of the Lee County Land Development Code Advisory Committee. So I would ask to be accepted as an expert in planning and zoning.
Proceed.
So the presentation outlined today, I'm going to review the planning considerations for you, then Ted Trish will talk about traffic, our engineer will review the site design, our landscape architect will review the landscape design, and then the architects I'm sure you all are aware of where this property is located. I just want to review what's on the site right now. As mentioned, the entire site is approximately 98 acres. The Phase One portion, which is at the corner of Racetrack Road and Benita Beach Road, is approximately nine acres. So this is the grandstand clubhouse facility here, racetrack. These are the kennels. You see the parking. There are two entrances from Old 41, and an entrance from Racetrack Road. To the south is the Mediterra Development. You can see this is portions of their preserve and golf course adjacent to the site. So property to the east is basically commercial and light industrial. Property to the west is also commercial. And property to the north of Benita Beach Road is also zoned commercial, although it's vacant at this time. This is the existing building. As Mr. Powell already mentioned, this is basically a three-story building. It's 150,000 square feet. It was built circa 1972, so it's over 45 years old. This is the front of the building. The grandstands and the track are to the back of the building. And as Mr. Powell already mentioned, the reason for the design of this building with the passage of that constitutional amendment goes away. They don't need the grandstands with the racing going away. So the remaining uses, the simulcasting, the card room, the restaurant, the bar, they take up less than a third of that building. And again, as Mr. Powell already mentioned, one of the conditions that we've agreed to is that they will be demolished... This building will be demolished within one year of the certificate of occupancy for the new building. So looking at the existing zoning of the site, again, our original application was just for this corner, this Phase One, and at the request of staff, we've included the entire property. That was done to be able to include a couple of conditions that staff was concerned about. One was the interconnection, and the second was the demolition of the building. Right now, there are four different zoning districts on this site. There's a CPD, Commercial Plan Development. That Commercial Plan Development basically allows one use, which is a golf pitch and putt. The C2 is Commercial Zoning District, Ag2 for the southern portion of the site, and then an RM2, which is a multifamily district. There's a small 12-unit multifamily structure there. So the request is to rezone the entire property to a Commercial Plan Development. It includes two phases. Phase One is for the building that we're going to go into more detail on today, and Phase Two is the remaining 88 acres, which will be maintained for existing uses, temporary uses that are already going on on the site. So future development of Phase Two will require future approvals. So no development on Phase Two is being approved with this request. Some of the benefits of this request, we will be creating a new attraction on Benita Beach Road, bringing those buildings and activities to the roadway. Architecture and landscaping design in the new building will improve the aesthetics of the corridor. We've committed to removing an outdated building. We're providing for desired future interconnectivity between Old 41 and Racetrack Road, and we're providing for bicycle and pedestrian access. We're improving the safety of the intersection of Racetrack Road and Benita Beach Road, and improving water quality throughout the... They turned me way up now.
It's better we can hear.
This is the master concept plan. The master concept plan has two sheets. The first one is delineating the phases. So again, Phase One at the corner, Phase Two, the remainder of the site. There are two conditions. Again, the grandstand clubhouse and kennels will be demolished within one year of the CO for the cardroom facility, and condition number eight, H, related to the interconnection, providing that interconnection through the property. We've included a schedule of uses for Phase Two that acknowledge uses that have been ongoing historically on the site, and I'll just read those for you. So accessory uses and structures, essential services, the multifamily residential, again, limited to the 12 dwelling units that are existing on the site. Parking lot accessory, Racetrack Group Two. And then temporary uses, outdoor sales, parking lot sales, event uses such as fairs, carnivals, circuses, concerts, automobile surface storage, where delineated on the MCP. So that's this hatching here, white hatching. Motorcycle training activities, and in the event of an emergency, staging storage in support of emergency responders. So if you remember after Irma, they did have a lot of staging on this site. So there are two areas of disagreement with staff, and one is related to those temporary uses. They have a condition which puts a five-year limitation on those temporary uses, which is all temporary uses listed under Phase Two are limited to a five-year period from the effective date of this ordinance. And what we would like to request is 10 years rather than five years. The way the ordinance is written and conditioned, we would have to come back in to amend the CPD in order to extend that timeframe. Five years in a development scenario is not a very long window in order to figure out what they'd like to do with the rest of the site. These uses have been on the site for at least 10 years right now without any impacts to public health, safety, or welfare, and that public hearing process that right now, at five years, we would have to go through in order to extend the timeframe, would require a lot of information and detailed analysis that maybe isn't relevant to just extending a timeframe for five years. So again, what we would request is 10 years rather than five years. So now looking at the nine acres at the corner. So for this graphic, north is to the left. This is Benita Beach Road and Racetrack Road. This is the gas station here. So the building is shown as the orange. It's a one-story building. It's approximately 33,000 square feet. You can see there are two access points from Racetrack Road in here, and there is interconnection to the existing site here, and then potential future interconnection here to the west. This green in the back is the stormwater management area. There are two pines on-site. They are not heritage trees, but they are large pines, and we are preserving them in We will be making improvements to Racetrack Road to bring it into compliance with your complete streets ordinance, and our engineer will review those improvements in greater detail. This is the entrance into the site, the drop-off area. This is the service drive for the armored trucks deliveries, and these are the dumpster and recycling location here. And we are providing bike racks, bike parking as well. So again, those four existing uses that are in the building right now, the simulcast, the card room, the restaurant, the bar, those are being relocated to this facility. those are being relocated to this facility. And how those are integrated and located in the building will be reviewed for you by the architect. And one thing I just want to emphasize is that the card room and the simulcasting is a very unusual use. It has non-standard requirements based on the security of the site. So when you're looking at the design of the building, there were very particular things that had to be considered in that design. And again, our architect's going to review that for you in greater detail. This was a graphic we used in our neighborhood meeting. It's just a comparison of the location of the existing building to the location of the new building. So for the neighbors so that they could see where this would be in relationship to their, to their community. So it's over 1,000 feet farther away from the nearest residence in Mediterra. So it's a little bit closer to Pine Haven, the residences in Pine Haven. But remember, it's going from a three-story building to a one-story building. So the impacts to that community will be less. And to the north, the nearest residence is over 1,000 feet away.
Can I just ask a question? Where is the outdoor eating area in that picture?
It's basically at the corner. So across from the gas station.
So it'd be fronting onto Racetrack Road?
Yes, Racetrack and Benita.
Could you, could you explain one slide back of the, of the site plan? Up to the upper left of that bright orange line in the middle of the road, what is that?
And again, our engineer will review that in greater detail. Staff had requested that we place a median in Racetrack Road. So that cars can't make that left into the racetrack. That was based on a safety concern from staff.
We'll discuss that more later. Just for curiosity, Trackside Donuts. Do you own that?
No.
Do you don't?
No.
Okay.
You can see the red here is their property. So there's sliver along Old 41 that they do not own. And one of those pieces is the Racetrack Donuts.
And that's a private, private owner owns that? Okay.
So I'm going to review consistency with the Benita Plan. There are two future land use designations on the site. Most of it is designated general commercial. There is a small portion designated high-density residential. That's where that small multifamily development is. The general commercial future land use provides for a wide range of commercial uses, including retail and service uses for residents and visitors. And allows commercial use in planned developments. So we are consistent with that policy. It's intended, intended for an interconnected mix of uses, including commercial, with an emphasis on compatibility. Again, we're surrounded on three sides by commercial and industrial development. Walkability, bikeability, again, we're implementing complete streets. And a vibrant and aesthetically pleasing streetscape, which you will see as we go through this presentation. Looking through your, your plan and the policies that are related to development along Benita Beach Road. Talks about the importance of site design, access, land use, landscaping, parking requirements, interconnectivity, mobility. And those are all things that we are, are consistent with. And one thing I did want to point out that I forgot to mention. You notice the building has been brought to Benita Beach Road, to Racetrack Road, and the parking is placed behind the building. And that was intentional, so you don't see that sea of parking as you're coming along Benita Beach Road. Okay, so again, we're coordinating land use. We're improving your mobility network. And improving interconnectivity and multimodal access with the pedestrian and bicycle facilities.
Ma'am, I interject a question. Have you, were you given the comments that Ian Lockwood made regarding this project? How have you incorporated those? Relate to some of the things you've just stated. For example, the parking that is visible from Benita Beach Road, he suggested that not go there. How have you addressed his, his voluminous items in his report?
A lot of the comments made from Tool Design and also DPZ were related to the design of the building and turning the building or reconfiguring the building.
Yes.
What we had tried to do, and again, the architects will review this in greater detail for you, is to bring that activity of the building to the intersection. So the most active outdoor public part of this development is the restaurant. With the outdoor seating, the outdoor seating room, that's where you're going to see the most public interaction, public space. So we wanted to bring that to the intersection. And that necessitated the rest of the design of the building. Because that, that puts the restaurant at the intersection, that puts your simulcasting and your card room on the other side. Based on the security of the site, that ability to bring in the armored trucks, they can't, they can't be at the intersection, they have to be on the other side of the building. That really necessitated the design. So a lot of their comments were on turning the building. That turn of the building affects the security of the building. So those were the reasons why we did not make those changes to the design.
So you needed the access on the west side of the building?
Yes, the access for the armored trucks.
For, exactly, security. Okay, thank you.
So with these elements from the transportation plan, again, we're improving the aesthetics of the roadway. You're going to see a lot about the architecture of the building. And we have proposed a landscape betterment plan, so we're increasing the landscaping over the code requirement. So the second area of disagreement with staff was on the sign deviation. In simple terms, what we'd like to be able to do is to replace the copy of the sign. So instead of saying Naples, Fort Myers, Greyhound Racing, Poker, Simulcasting, it would say something like the Benita Springs Card Room, simply. The deviation is necessary because your sign code for a non-conforming sign, you can't change more than 25% of the copy of the sign. The, the sign is non-conforming regards to height. The height limitation is seven feet. This sign is about 15 feet tall. And is non-conforming as for, as far as type. It's considered a pylon sign, which is not allowed on Benita Beach Road. We do agree with staff's proposed conditions. If you did choose to approve this deviation, and that would be to make the, the base of the sign look like a monument sign, we would make that base match the building that you're going to see. We would install landscaping around the bottom of the sign. And at the end of 10 years, the sign would become, would be changed to be one that's conforming with your land development code. And the reason for keeping the sign is just, it's a very iconic sign. People recognize it, people associate it with this facility. So we'd like to keep the sign as is for the time being.
What benefit? I know you'd like to keep the sign the way it is. But could you enumerate the benefits of keeping the sign from your perspective?
The benefit?
I mean, you like it, so.
The benefit?
They don't like it.
Is the, again, just that continuity of the development. The sign has been there for at least 20 years. People associate it with this project, this site. So we'd just like to continue it for a little bit longer.
You could change that in three years if you wanted to, instead of waiting 10 years. Is that a true statement?
We could change 25% of the copy per year. So I'm not sure how we would manage to change Fort Myers, Naples to Benita Springs in 25% increments. That's.
Okay, but at the end of 10 years, you have to change the.
We'd have to get rid of the sign altogether.
But you could, could you do that in six years?
As opposed to 10 years?
Yeah. I mean, it, it has, it has to be done. You don't have to wait 10 years to do it. Is that a true statement?
I suppose theoretically, no. We wouldn't have to wait.
Okay.
Let me be clear. Is what you're saying, the only disagreement with the city deals with the copy on the sign rather than the sign itself?
The disagreement with staff, staff, well, I don't want to speak for staff. I, I believe their objection was they would like us to remove the sign altogether rather than change the copy.
Right.
And we're saying we would like to be able to change the copy. I mean, the, the alternative, there is no limitation on how long a non-conforming sign can remain in place. So they would keep the sign as is.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that too? I would assume since you're no longer going to be doing Greyhound dog racing, that that would come off the sign as well? That you wouldn't have the Greyhound across there, or is your intent to keep that?
If we are allowed to change the copy of the sign, yes, the Greyhound racing.
So that a lot of what is the iconic, we recognize this because it's been there for a long time, will go away because the name change will come and the, the picture of the Greyhound will go away. So that, that sort of need to have people know that this is what it was before is maybe not as great as, it's not going to work as much because people aren't going to see that Greyhound and the, the sign that says, it says Greyhound Racing on it. I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out what really is the advantage to keeping this sign. And the only thing I can hear from you is it will be something that people will recognize and thereby come to your place. Not sure that I agree with the notion that a different sign that said your new name on it, that was more in keeping with what they're trying to do on Benita Beach Road, would necessarily cut down much on your traffic that comes in. So anyway, that's just my sort of reaction to it.
And I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe they would keep the, the dog on the top and change the name on it. I, I'm not sure what that would look like.
Since you don't do dog racing, that would seem sort of odd, but okay, whatever.
Again, the continuity of, this is still the Greyhound Track Facility that, that you have been coming to. So just looking at the findings for a rezoning request. So we are consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of your Benita Plan and your Land Development Code. We meet or exceed all of the performance standards set forth in the Benita Plan and LDC. We're consistent with the uses and intensities allowed by the general commercial future land use designation. We're compatible with existing and planned uses in the area. We have access to adequate transportation. And our deviation, as requested, will not be a detriment to public health, safety, or welfare, as it is an existing sign. There are no environmentally critical or sensitive areas on the site. The proposed mix of uses is appropriate at the subject location. And public facilities are available and adequate to serve the proposed land use. So it is my professional planning opinion that the proposed rezoning has met all the applicable standards, is consistent with your Land Development Code and Plan. Is compatible with adjacent uses and has provided the necessary record that entitles it to approval. Again, the two areas where we disagree with staff are on the time limitation. We would prefer 10 years rather than five years. And would respectfully request approval of the sign deviation.
Thank you.
And now I will turn it over to Ted Trish to review transportation for you.
Good morning. My name's Ted Trish with TR Transportation Consultants. I have been accepted as an expert in transportation planning related matters in this forum before. I have a civil engineering degree. I've been practicing transportation planning in southwest Florida for about 20 years. Doing traffic studies and so forth. And again, I've been accepted in this forum and I have to be accepted this morning. Just a quick comment regarding the transportation study. We developed a methodology and met with staff, the transportation staff that the city uses for TIS review, and conducted the traffic study. As Paul indicated, this is a fairly significant downgrade in terms of traffic that will be attracted to this facility because of the elimination of live racing. Live racing is the predominant traffic generator of the existing facility. And I've just pulled three tables from the traffic study and put them here on the screen for you to see. This is the PM peak hour trip generation. Again, in our traffic studies, we typically look at the weekday PM peak hour. That's typically the highest travel hour combined on the streets in this area of the county. The table two that's on your left is the trip generation based on the existing facility. And you can see at the lower right corner, just less than 500 trips are generated during the PM peak hour. And then the two tables on the right, the top table is the proposed facility that Paula has identified for you. It's a reduction in terms of, of the square footage that's provided in, from the existing facility. Some, some uses are increasing the floor area, but overall, it's a significant reduction in floor area and the capacity from the public standpoint. So the trip generation of the proposed card room is just over 400 trips in the PM peak hour. So that's a reduction in the lower right table is a reduction of about 80 trips during the PM peak hour. So it's a reduction of about 20% during the PM peak hour, which is consistent with going from a large use that you see today to the, a restaurant and the card room facility that we're proposing. So that's basically the conclusion of our analysis that we're reducing trips. We're reducing trips to the intersection. We'll still maintain, as Paul indicated on the site plan, access to both Benita Beach Road and to Old 41. You can get to both of the roadways from this facility. So folks that are visiting this facility and have been for years can still use the same routes to get to and from the facility. We're not asking for any additional changes to access to Benita Beach Road or to Old 41. As far as the remainder of the Ag parcel, we didn't look at that yet since that's still going to be zoned Ag. When uses come forward for a rezoning application, there'll be another traffic study done for that parcel that will look at the impacts of what uses may or may not be proposed for that, for that parcel. We've also conducted the traffic study for the development order application. So there's another traffic study that's been done and submitted to the city as part of the development order application. So there's been quite a few looks at this from staff from a traffic standpoint. And again, it's an overall reduction for this use that was before you this morning. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or wait till the end with whichever you prefer.
Mr. Worcester.
Thank you, Mr. Trish. I have a question. Are you aware that a roundabout may be in the offing at Benita Beach Road and Racetrack Road?
Yes, I've seen the studies that recommend that in the future.
Okay, and I, I've kind of looked at them too. And it appears that a roundabout there would work. Do you agree with that?
I have not looked at any studies or.
Okay, well, as far, as far as right of way.
Right of way, okay. Would fit geometrically.
Yeah, with your plan. Okay, secondly, as you are aware, Old 41 is a, is a current project to make a dramatic improvement on Old 41 from the south, Tamiami, all the way to Benita Beach Road. And Paul said there were three or two entrances off of Old 41. Aren't there actually three entrances off Old 41? Right at the south property line? As well as that split entrance and then the one to the.
This doesn't have a laser pointer, does it? Top, top button? That doesn't turn it off?
There's one here.
Who's got that? There's one right there, yes. The main entrance is.
One there and isn't.
And that's the service entrance right now.
Right, okay, so there, there are three, existing three entrances.
As far as the use to the northern one, I'm not certain how much that use is actually used by the. used by the current facility. What I, I would consider the main access is to this facility, the two southern driveways.
My point is, you plan to maintain in Phase Two just those three entrances?
Again, Phase Two is going to be ag zoning, so when they come forward with development plans for that, those accesses may change, they may shift, we just don't know at that time.
All right, you're not...
Depending on how, what they want to develop, and how the buildings layout, and where access will be located. But for now, those accesses will be maintained in their current location.
May I ask a question, Larry? Larry?
Please.
Okay, sorry. I'd like to know two things. What is the peak hour that you call the peak hour in the day?
The PM peak hour is one hour that typically occurs between four and six PM. It, it can vary by fifteen, thirty minutes, depending upon which intersection you're at, but it's typically the highest hour of traffic, the highest sixty minutes between four and six PM.
And when did you take these measurements? What time of year?
Again, these aren't, these aren't existing volumes, these are projected volumes. So we're, these are the PM peak hour trip generation. Because we're reducing the impacts, staff agreed that we didn't have to do the level of analysis that is normally done when you're adding a new project to the roadway, since this project already exists, we're already generating traffic. For all the uses that are being put in the new building, they're already offered in the existing facility, so it's actually a reduction.
These are basically estimates, is what you're saying?
Correct. The trip generation is an estimate during the PM peak hour.
The reason I ask is where you're located is at peak hour, both morning and night, one of the hardest areas for traffic because of people trying to get to seventy-five from Tamiami Trail using the Old Forty-One up this way, and coming from the north using it that way, and coming down from seventy-five. So, since I use that fairly often, I know it's a nightmare, and what concerns me is the, I know where you are on, on Benita Beach Road, there's a light so that people can go in and out on the light from Race Track Road, but coming onto Old Forty-One, there is not. And there are times when that traffic is backed up at peak hours from Benita Beach Road, way, way, way below where you are. So I'm wondering about the need to have a one-way turn there if you're going to come out of there, rather than trying to go across traffic there. I think that would be something of a nightmare, but I don't know where that gets addressed, but that...
Those, those are operational issues that typically get addressed at the development order stage, when we get into the operational issues. And I will say that with the zoning, we're relocating the activity to, right at the, as Paul indicated, right at the intersection, so...
So it's more likely that people would come in?
I anticipate most of the traffic entering and exiting will use that light of Benita Beach Road, but you'll still have folks that are, have been coming to this facility for years using the...
Well, it's no big deal if you want to...
Simulcast that will come from the south, correct.
The trouble, the other ways, the turns across it.
And, and again, we're not open in the morning, so we really don't impact the morning peak hour, so we don't open until after nine eight, nine AM, so there really is very little impact, just employees maybe coming early in the morning.
And the next slide that you have, I think, which is the site plan, I'd still like to know what the orange line means. Is that a con, is that concrete, or what is that?
Yes, that was at the request of staff, that a concrete separator, basically a raised concrete island like you see in the middle of multi-lane roads, be installed along Race Track Road from the stop bar at Benita Beach Road, past our northern access drive.
Doesn't that create some confusion? If you're making a right-hand turn, and you want to get some gas, you could easily get trapped into the wrong lane and wind up in, at the card room rather than the gas station.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. Our analysis showed the need for this. In fact, we did analysis during our traffic analysis, looking at the queues. Initially, our site plan had our northern access was aligned with Furlong. Furlong is the roadway on the east side of Race Track Road that's behind the Race Track gas, gas station. But at the request of staff, we shifted the access further south, and then also at the request of staff, they wanted the median put in. You can see we have two driveways to Race Track Road, so the median doesn't have as much impact on this site as it does the uses that are on the east side of Race Track Road, specifically the gas station, and then there's an auto repair shop that's at the end of Furlong. The traffic will no longer be able to turn left into Furlong. In fact, they'll have to travel south. They'll either use the right-in, right-out on Benita Beach Road, because there is an access on to, on to Benita Beach Road. You had the pointer.
It'd be nice to have that pointer.
Ted? Ted?
There's a right-in, right-out right there, yes. Oh, you had the pointer. There's a right-in, right-out to Race Track right here, and here's the auto repair business, and then this is the charter school. So with the, with the median opening, our traffic will still be able to turn, traffic coming off of Beach Road will be able to turn into the parking lot, and if you want to exit back to Beach Road and get to the light, you'll come out this southern driveway, and you'll be able to turn left out and access the traffic light. But anybody coming into Race Track, they'll have to come down and turn left on the, I believe this is called Performance Lane, and then come along in front of the charter school and come into. So again, we've agreed to the median as part of the condition, but it impacts the properties on the east side much more significantly than, than this project.
If I owned the gas station, I don't think I'd be very happy with this arrangement. Am I alone? That's our traffic guy?
Well, it's going to introduce a problem, but it's, for the, for people coming out of Race Track, that's what's your problem.
Well, that's all the businesses on Furlong Street. There's a number of businesses back in there.
And we also have access, as Paul indicated, out to the back, because then that will allow access to get to the Old Forty-One corridor.
One more quick question. You, you are going to add another right-turn lane in?
That's correct. We are adding a right-turn lane, actually, we're adding a right-turn lane for both driveways on Race Track Road. So traffic that turns off of Race, off of Benita Beach Road will then be able to get into the right-turn lane and decel, and then turn into the parking lot.
Yes, sir. Are you finished?
I am, if there's no other questions. Thank you.
Morning. My name is Rick Brolansky, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida in good standing, and I'm a vice president for Home Montez and director of our land development. I've also provided expert testimony for the city of Bene Springs on other projects, as well as other local municipalities around here, and I'd like to serve as expert testimony in this case as well for civil engineering. First, I'd like to go off, go over a little bit of the nuances for the site layout. We actually started this endeavor on working with the city staff and your outside consultants. We started at the beginning of the year, sometime in January, actually met with them on the east coast and went over our concept. So a lot of the plan has evolved considerably from the first time we met to what you see right now. And I'll go over some of the nuances that were done to, you know, satisfy some of the comments that we received from staff and outside consultants. Can I borrow your pointer, please?
Thank you so much.
So you'll notice that one of the key items is getting the building close to the intersection of Benita Beach Road and Race Track Road. That was set up where the building had to be located for proximity to pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities, and then also we created this nice welcoming, public open space at the intersection. We'll have our bike rack in this location, and we provide the pedestrian connectivity over in that location as well. And Mr. Jones, our architect, will go through more of the building improvements and how those coincide with our site activities, but I'll stay mostly on the site for right now. But I will say that this is the restaurant area, this is the gaming simulcast area, and then the back of the building along Benita Beach Road, this is more the service area, office administration and storage, and as you heard, some of the security improvements that are needed for this facility. Again, we have a, we have a block design, and I lost my battery, okay. We have a block design layout where we have our two main corridors, access aisles coming through the project. This was at the encouragement of the outside consultants to create this as a block design for future grid-type network, that eventually when our, if, and when the site develops further to the west, this grid network can continue and possibly even access to Benita Beach, I'm sorry, Old Forty-One. So, we come into the site, we have two accesses off Race Track Road. This is more the formal drop-off area, it'll have a covered area where you can drop off. We provide all of our ADA parking in close proximity to the building, very convenient for that use. And then our general parking area for the majority of the public is in this area. The area over here, this is more service, employer-oriented. We have our solid waste facilities in this location, and then, as we talked about, this is more of the security armor truck delivery, and, as well as deliveries into the back of the building for kitchen facilities or whatever. We also provide common access for the existing parking area that's going to remain as far as the Greyhound, Grey, Grandstand facility. This also shows the improvements of Race Track Road, which we've gone through before, and I've got another slide that shows that in greater detail, so I'll go through that later. We provide pedestrian connectivity throughout the parking lot, and that comes back to the main facility. And again, this is more the public access portion. Back over here, this is more where the employees, administration, staff. Our building is roughly thirty feet from the right of way of Benita Beach Road. We tried to get as close as possible, we needed some room to go and do infrastructure, you know, utilities and drainage around the facility, so that thirty feet, we can make sure that the, everything's provided for the building, and yet we get as close as possible to the frontage of Benita Beach Road.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Mr. Lockwood, again, made some recommendations, and he talked about a bunch of utilities along Race Track Road on this property. And I'm seeing nothing presented here relevant to those utilities. Adjacent to the Race Track Road right of way to the west, are there a bunch of utilities in there?
I do have a slide later on that goes through the utility improvements, and I can go through that in better detail, that graphic's a lot better for mentioning that, so if you'd let me talk about it then, I'd be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Just to recap, parking, our site provides roughly four hundred and six parking spaces, and, and we also, by code required, the code-required parking is only at two hundred and fifty-three, so we have a little bit of additional parking provided for special events or anything, which we hope this facility will need, because it'll be so popular and well-traveled.
Proceed on to the...
So you have additional parking for special events?
Yes, sir.
But isn't there room in the site elsewhere in Phase Two for special events?
It's not as close and convenient for parking, it's quite a distance away. And it doesn't have the same pedestrian connectivity and whatnot, so go ahead, please.
I just wanted to make a clarification. Our parking standard that we used is based on the operation of the existing building and in consultation with other paramutual facilities in the state. So that four hundred spaces was based on that standard. So according to this, that standard, we needed three hundred and ninety-eight spaces, and we're providing four hundred and six. So, it's not the, the two fifty, it's three ninety-eight.
Unique to the use of the facility?
Yes, thank you.
I would like to mention, too, about the, the entry sign, the pylon sign we've been talking about. I, I think what also may have been failed to be mentioned was, that sign has some sentimental value, too. The founder, the mentor for the family, had a lot to do with that sign, design, and construction, and I think there's some, I, I know there's, for a fact, there's some sentimental value, which is why they want to preserve that sign, so. I am off some slides here, give me one second. Dividend sheets. This next slide, it seems very complicated, but I think we'll, I'll break it down to its simplest form, but what this will show is that we comply very well with the city's, Benita Springs, Phase One Stormwater Master Plan, which goes into some of the conversations we heard earlier. Upper in the right-hand, in the upper right-hand corner, this is actually an excerpt from the city's master plan. It shows the various sub-areas in this location, and how they're tied together, how they're interlinked by pipes, swales, whatever, ditches, but this is really part of the computer simulation that was done as part of that plan. Back in 2010, this Phase One plan was done, it was done by interconnected pond routing model network that evaluated all the tributaries and streams and pipes and, and whatnot within the city for a variety of different storm events. And, and from that model, it was determined what the estimated water elevations would be from those different design events. So we had a great amount of data available to analyze the existing conditions of the site. Over to the next slide, over in the upper left-hand corner, that right there superimposes our proposed development onto an aerial base, and it shows some of the computer model nodes and paths that were part of this rough graphic over here. It shows specifically where those nodes and pipes are in relationship to our site. And this is probably a good time to go over general drainage. Roughly half of the existing, and I'm talking the entire ninety-nine acres or so, roughly half of that area flows to the north of Benita Beach Road. And it does so with the help of this shallow borrow area that was constructed some time ago, that drained to Benita Beach Road, and over on the south side of Benita Beach Road is this large structure that receives the flow and takes that flow to the north, eventually to Imperial River. So we're in the Imperial River watershed. The area to the, what, east of us is Greyhound Square, that's actually in a different watershed, so there's a division right there between our watershed and the neighboring watershed. So all this water goes, generally flows to the swale, and that's from Race Track Road, it's from a majority of the parking area by the grandstands, and then our site, which is undeveloped right now. This structure looks like this. If you were facing north and looking at the wall of that structure, it would look, and I cannot get this to work, I'm sorry. Okay. There's a V-notch, I'm sorry. There's a V-notch in the side of the structure, and then it has this large opening above it. All the water is limited by how much water can go through that structure. So that was part of the existing analysis, and then we added the proposed improvements. Now, the proposed improvements are basically all the impervious area that we plan to add to the site, but we also plan to have a water management system to serve the onsite water management. And all of, all of the onsite, the excess water management would discharge to the same ditch that, by a control structure located just at this location right here. For Race Track Road, we plan on actually improving the drainage of Race Track Road. Currently, right now, Race Track Road just has a shallow swale along the west side of that roadway pavement, so it really doesn't have any conventional treatment methods for water quality or whatever. So what we plan on doing was adding some filter marches that provide vegetation, biolog- So what we plan on doing was adding some filter marshes that provide vegetation, biological removal, and then also it provides residence time where all those sediments and bad nutrients can get out of the water before it passes through and downstream to our Imperial River. It's very hard to see on this slide, but this right here, this table right here compares our pre versus post. And we analyze several design events. We analyze the five-year, twenty-four-hour event that determines what our minimum pavement elevations could be without flooding. There's the twenty-five-year, three-day event, which we use, it's a hurricane-type event, which we use for studying the onsite water management, determining the height of our perimeter berms, so all that water is contained onsite and can only flow through that control structure, not threatening any of the downstream or adjacent properties. And then the last analysis we do is what's called the one-hundred-year, three-day zero-discharge elevation. And that determines what our finished, first finished floor elevation has to be, so there's no flooding of the, of the structure. So those three design events were analyzed, and that, this table right here just recaps what the pre versus post development, what our minimum pavement elevations have to be to meet criteria, and what the minimum finished floor elevation needs to be to meet that criteria as well. And there, I know there were some questions about stormwater, so before I go to next slide, anything on this, or would you like me to proceed?
Yeah, the, along the east side.
Yes, sir.
The swales you have indicated in there, does that, that affect any of the utilities that are, your section?
No, sir.
Your sections show a swell, but you don't show the utilities, what's there? Section A and B B.
So there's only one utility that's in the footprint of where we have the filter marshes, and that's actually a TECO gas main. There's a BSU water main, but that's actually inside our property more, and it's not affected by the footprint of these filter marshes. So we have considered all the utilities and made sure that we did not conflict with any of those, and we still maintain the same cover over those utilities and protect them during construction. And I do have a better slide that shows that coming up on the.
Good, thank you.
So proceeding on. This just identifies aerial view of the project and denotes the existing land cover. And we have two land covers affected on the project. The majority of our land cover by Florida land use cover. That's not exactly right. I forget how the NAF flux codes. The classification is three-ten herbaceous open area, which is basically just a previously disturbed lands that now is basically the here land cover. And then the small area over here that we will fill as part of that borrow area, that's exactly what it's known as. It's a man-made borrow or lake area, and we have a small impact that we'll be filling in a portion of that as part of the site improvements. But there are no wetlands, and that, this is what it's really meant to do, is just explain that we're not affecting any wetlands or sensitive areas. And really, there's no opportunities for preserving any indigenous vegetation areas as well. It's just not, nothing of value to do in that regard. This next slide shows a little bit of a large range of improvements that were coordinated with your staff on Race Track Road. And I know you've been introduced to a little bit about it with the raised median. That's the raised median going through here. It's four foot wide, and it's not going to have a steep, well, our proposed median, it's a mountable median, so for emergency vehicles or whatever, they could still cross it if need be. So it's not the steep six-inch height vertical median, but it is still a raised median, and it will still deter traffic from going through there. Roughly the pavement for Race Track Road is about forty-one feet wide right now. It really doesn't have very good pavement markings. It was marked at one time, but pavement markings have since worn down quite a bit, and they're hard to distinguish in the field. But it appears that we have two exit lanes for turning onto Benita Beach Road, and then there's one lane coming into the property. And there are no bicycle facilities or anything like that associated with the existing road right now, and we're going to convert that. What we plan on doing is striping out a bike lane along the eastern side of the road, having two turn lanes eleven feet wide, having a four-foot median separator, have an incoming lane, have an incoming lane and a four-foot bike lane on the opposing side of the roadway. That doesn't include what we're going to add for right-turn lanes to come into the property at our two access points. We also include a six-foot wide sidewalk, that'll be a raised sidewalk along the west side of the property, excuse me, along the west side of Race Track Road. And then you can see the filter marshes. There's two shades there. The blue shows the bottom of the filter marshes, so most of that is all on our site. But there's some, there's some green area that we'll include with the landscaping and whatnot that'll dovetail into parkways, so it'll look very inviting, soothing to the people walking by and whatnot. Shade trees as part of the sidewalk improvements. There is a typical section over there, and it's really hard to see in the lower left-hand corner, but that does show an existing TECO gas main and how we maintain that, and we don't affect it by our grading. As you see, we have the raised median, and then later, as we get past our first access to the north, which is around one hundred feet, we go to just centerline striping of the centerline to restrict passing or going into the other lane. This is our proposed utility plan. I'd just like to go over a couple of items. We're in the service area, the Benita Springs Utility Franchise Area. They'll be serving both the wastewater and potable water and fire protection for the site. And there's a large twelve-inch, there's a large twelve-inch water main that currently exists along the property. It's close to our frontage. It's this corridor right here. We maintain that corridor, we'll keep the main in place. There are some taps that we'll do for service and adding a fire hydrant, but, and adding a fire sprinkler service for the building, but main will stay in its same location. It's already in easement, we don't plan on affecting that at all. Sanitary service, currently there's no stub outs to the property, so we have to go a little bit offsite and connect on to the existing system. There's a manhole right here at Perforance Lane and Race Drag Road intersection. We're going to connect into that manhole and extend the gravity system so we can serve our property. This building has got a restaurant, so it's going to have HDIs, hydro mechanical grease interceptors as part of the ways of removing grease and oils from the system, so that'll be protecting that line. And, and aside from just general fire protection, adding fire hydrants and sprinkler systems, it's really not too complicated at the site as far as the utility services are provided. With that, I don't have any more talking points, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
What is the, anybody want to take a break before you want to go a little bit more?
Let's go and finish their presentation and then take a break.
The next one I'd like to introduce is Greg DeSarre, our landscape architect.
Good morning. For the record, Greg DeSarre, Registered Landscape Architect and Vice President with Dave Jones and Associates. I'm a graduate of, a Bachelor of Science in Landscape Architecture from West Virginia University, and I've been practicing here in Lee County my entire professional career for thirty-eight plus years. I have been accepted as a professional witness in, in this forum as well as others throughout the county and the state, and I have testified here and been accepted and requested I'd be the same now. As Paula mentioned earlier in her brief introduction, we, we have provided a landscape betterment plan for, for the subject property. It's hard to see on this chart, but we actually outlined so that for staff to see how much betterment we're going. We're providing, you know, an access of twenty-two percent more trees and palms on site. The majority of the, the vast majority of the betterment is along Benita Beach Road and, and this corner here, along Race Track Road, as well as the pedestrian connections through, through the site. This is the actual landscape plan that we prepared for both zoning and the development order phase. As I mentioned, the, the betterment along Benita Beach Road will provide an enhanced buffer predominantly oaks for the main canopy tree along the roadway. We're also installing royal palms to give a more dramatic and instant of impact and installation of tiered shrub, ground cover, ground cover shrub and small canopy tree, dense canopy trees that could hide the service area here. We also provide enhancements around the restaurant, outdoor seating area. The architect has designed the building so that part of the architecture helps confine or block the, the offsite views that are undesirable. We're also adding to that by the creation of a courtyard effect with the landscaping. Then we've also enhanced each pedestrian entrance. We've accentuated those with native palms and ground covers and shrubs in the parking area to help guide pedestrians as they're transitioning from, from the parking lot. And, and then we have enhanced building perimeter plantings throughout. Ninety-seven percent of the trees and palms on the site are native. We're well over seventy-five percent native on shrubs and, and well over fifty-five percent on ground covers for, for the site. All the plant material being used is Florida-friendly material. This is a cross-section to show that tiered and enhanced buffer along Benita Beach Road and, and into the service area. Again, that's more of a true graphic representation, as you can see, with a combination of oaks, palms, and the dense canopy, lower canopy trees to help provide a visual barrier along Couple of cross-sections along Race Track Road between the road and the building, and then the, the next one would be the road and the parking that shows the enhanced buffer. Plantings up adjacent to the building enhancing the, again, enhancing the pedestrian connection from Benita Beach Road. Installation of the tholmer marsh, which, which meanders along, along there that was shown on, on Rick's previous plans. And those are planted, again, with native, native vegetation to help get some nutrients out of, out of the stormwater before it is discharged. Next one, this is a similar one, just where, where the parking is, and you see the setback of the parking from Benita Beach, from Race Track Road is quite a distance, so we have plenty of visual green open space and, and plantings to help buffer that, that mass of Here are our two views from Benita Beach Road of the proposed landscaping. We've, we've grayed out the building in the background just so you can see the, the scale that the architect has some, some excellent renderings of the building in itself, but, but here's the actual landscape plan that you see on, on, on the, the betterment plan. Again, we're creating heavy buffers back at the service yard, and then also some backup and, and garden setting for, for the restaurant area as well.
Where is that sign currently located in that picture?
Oh, I can't go back. How come it's not going back? The sign, the, the existing sign is actually just off-screen over here to the left. And again, this, this is more of a somewhat perspective view of the, of the buffer and what you have viewed if you're heading east along Benita Beach Road. I'll be happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to Mr. Jones.
The, the information that you give us on plant material calls out the species and locations, but it doesn't tell us anything about the size of these units. And, and the package that we were given, there was a drawing that did show some of the sizes, and it seemed that even though, you know, the, the write-up talks about a robust landscaping approach, that many of the street trees are only ten feet high, three, three-inch caliper, four-inch spread, and a lot of the shrubs are, I can't remember whether it's three gallon or five gallon. I mean, is there any inclination to make the plant materials, certainly along Benita Beach Road, more robust than what's shown in the drawings?
Well, we have included some royal palms with twelve feet or so of, of gray wood behind it to give that, that instant effect, and also the, the accent canopy trees, dense shrub that's hiding or going in at a dense five, five to six-foot height upon immediate installation. All, all the plant material meets or exceeds the, the city's land development codes. And, and again, we're providing more, a, a lot more volume of plant material as well to help with that as well.
All right. But a, a street tree that's only ten feet tall doesn't really get the impact that your illustration shows, and maybe that's twenty years down the road?
Those are probably five years, maybe down the road, three to five years down the road. I mean, it's hard to tell.
All right, thank you.
No other questions, I will turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Thomas Jones. I'm Principal Vice President at WDG Architecture and Planning in Naples on the project architect. I have a Bachelor of Architecture degree from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm a Florida Registered Architect, member of the American Institute of Architects and National Council of Architectural Registration Boards, and I would ask that you would accept my expert testimony. So I'd like to review the building planning with you this time. So our sketch here is a concept plan of the building. North is up, Beach Road would be to the top of the page, and Race Track Road would be to your right. So many of the other witnesses and testimony describe some of the planning aspects of the building. I'll review those briefly, just to reiterate and clarify some of the moves and philosophies and planning techniques we tried to implement. So as, as has been mentioned, the building has some major components to the building program, which include four primary uses to the building, and that would be a restaurant, a simulcast room, which is an off-track bedding type facility or space that would have individual carrels, bedding stations, very much reminiscent to what you might find in a library with privacy screen walls and a privatized desk, individual TV monitors, screens around the room, very light controlled environment, high technology implemented in that room. So two major uses there. The, the primary use here is the card room, the largest space here. And then the fourth use would be the back-of-house spaces that we, that we call this, and those would be all of your administrative spaces, offices, support, private secured rooms, and various storage spatial needs in that location. So in looking at the building program, we had to understand obviously some of the site physical characteristics, some of the goals of planning, and the orientation of the building, the intersection, then assimilate that with a very complex and unique building program that you don't just drive down the street every day and see, which is a card room. And the card room has some very unique planning aspects to it, some very unique security aspects to it. It's an environment that has some philosophical or psychological rather, operational considerations to it. to it. It has security needs. We have components in here that are adult-oriented and not, you know, child-friendly. We have, we also have a restaurant component that is very much of public use. So we have all these specialized program pieces coming together. And so in evaluating those, the question is what are the more public-oriented spaces in the building, so to speak, and what are the more private-oriented spaces? And in that effort, the obvious space emerges, which is the restaurant. So in the existing facility right now, many people may not understand that food service exists, but it may not necessarily be a destination for everybody to go and have dinner or lunch or simply eat or enjoy a weekend evening. So the intent of this facility is to take that component of the owner's operation and celebrate that and make it relate to the site in a way that says this is the most civic-oriented portion of this project, is the most public-oriented portion of this project, so to speak, and let's place that function onsite where it makes the most sense. So in the effort to define the street edge and the intersection and the corner, the restaurant wants to be sighted at the intersection of Beach Road and Race Track Road. And future slides will demonstrate the impact that that would have, but it affords that restaurant component in terms of its scale and massing to actually define that corner in a way that would be appropriate and beneficial to the city. It also allows the public to engage the building from the primary vantage point of the site, which is from that intersection, and to understand that something happens there that's engaging. And that restaurant is a glazed element, so you'll see in future slides that the perimeter walls here on the north and the east are pretty much fully glazed so that there's a transparent interaction between the public realm and the interior private realm of this restaurant. It's meant to engage the street, it's meant to engage the intersection and likewise the public. In addition to that interior component of the restaurant, you'll see this sort of brown hatched area, this location to the east. So that's contemplated as an outdoor dining space and you've all have frequented the many excellent restaurants in Southwest Florida and understand that outdoor dining is a major component that enriches the experience and operation of any restaurant. And this site contemplates that just as well, recognizing that. But it also creates an outdoor environment that again, further defines that corner. Now, we can't create a quote-unquote "public plaza" necessarily. We don't have public access points for security reasons off of that corner, but we are endeavoring to hardscape that space and define a sense of space there and make it a place, make it a destination. So we've located that here as a little bit of a further buffer from the edges of the intersection. There's a component here that's rather unique. It's a detached space that is part of the restaurant component and that affords the owner-operator to provide some private gathering space there. It provides just the flexibility of a multitude of use and quote-unquote "parties" or functions. It also helps define this outdoor space, but it also acts more importantly as a screen to the gas station. So one of the challenges is when you, when you locate a restaurant in sort of this corner configuration and you have an existing neighbor in the form of a gas station, it's not very pleasant to sit in a restaurant and feel like the ambiance is great and desirable looking at gas stations or gas station pumps. So this detached element here provides that buffer and blocks that view, but further encapsulates and defines that outdoor space. And again, creating a sense of place for this corner that hasn't existed for decades or never existed in fact, and, and just further defining it from an urban planning standpoint. And you'll see in the images of the exterior of the building that that element has a vertical scale to it, so it also becomes a defining, anchoring, sort of an iconic element that anchors the building on the corner, but also matches the scale of the restaurant. So in the planning of the building, the restaurant has a prominent scale to it. The design moves on the restaurant are bold. There are overhangs, sweeping overhangs that provide nice covered spaces here. There's extensive of glass here that are again, creating a transparent link between public and private. So as we drive, as we enter the site, we're coming down Race Track Road and entering the first access here, what we're trying to do with the building is again, not conceal the entrance, but in our best effort, have the entrance to the building sort of in a negative spatial relationship carve a way into the building and that, which allows us to create a cover drop-off or a portica share. Sooner than later, we want the, the realization that here's the entrance of the building, which is for all intents and purposes fairly visible from that intersection. Again, further defining how user would get to this building, where the prominent entrance of the facility is. And again, just a marker and a key from a civic standpoint as to, look, this is an engaging building. Here's where we enter the project. And so this is a blurb here. You don't see much of the context of the site and parking, but we have taken strides to develop a very nice drop-off area here so that whether it's mass transportation, whether it's a privatized bus, or whether it's an individual user getting dropped off or a taxi service, that can occur undercover here and then parking will occur to the south. So the main entrance of the building develops here, the quote-unquote "public entrance." As you walk in, there is a shared lobby that allows an individual to access the restaurant and the simulcast space to the north and east. The next major component would be the card room here. It's the largest piece of the project. It's also the most privatized in the sense that it's adults-only. The nature of the activity and the card games that occur in there sort of regulate the security needs of that space and the lighting control and the view in and out of that space or lack thereof. And then to the western perimeter of that develops administrative offices, the many support spaces that are needed for that card room and some of the back-of-house spaces here that are relative to the armored truck delivery and exercises that you've heard about from the other speakers. So one of the considerations the owner has is separating employees from pub, from the public, from the patrons, and that's achieved here in the building layout. So to the west, the offices are occurring here where they actually can get light. The scale of the building breaks down here, but also as you've seen on the other site plans, to the left of this image where I'm pointing would be the section of the parking that's designated for employee parking. And this is on purpose because the owner-operator has a need to have a security protocol for his employees to come through this area, not through the main entrance. So it's like a security checkpoint. There are provisions back here for lockers and break rooms and it's essentially where most of the employees would work. And so it's a controlled area there. In a similar fashion tucked back here where it's not very visible and conspicuous to a patron of the building would be the armored truck bay. And so by the nature of what occurs with the exchange of money coming in and out, this truck would roll into a covered space, a door would shut and sort of just disappear from view. And in a secured environment through a security protocol, they could then operate the carrying back and forth of monies to that truck. The truck would leave and then access through this little driveway back here. The next slide is the primary view of the building. So if you were sitting in your vehicle and you were in the westbound lanes of Beach Road, as you looked to the southwest, you would see this view. Race Track Road would be to the left of this image, so you're seeing the perspective of the restaurant here, the covered area for the outdoor dining, this detached community party room, sort of the vertical tower element that's been created as a marker to help define the site. And then you see the building sort of pan back here to your right and step back in an effort to sort of reduce the massing and impact on the street. The next slide would be your view that you would have if you turned down Race Track Road and if you looked right immediately west to your right, this would be the view from the gas station, the Race Track gas station. So the other feature that this tower anchor element affords us is the relationship of this space here, which is essentially a pedestrian shelter shade space. So again, to further interconnect and define this space and relate it back to the intersection and the sidewalk in a pedestrian, public-friendly way, we provided this space here for public use, realizing that while the outdoor part of the restaurant is plaza-like, it would have a fence around it, a small low-level fence and landscaping to help define it and keep it secure. As you look to the left of the image, you see the main entrance of the building start to emerge. The next slide would be your view of the building from the main primary entrance to the site, which would be the first right-hand turn from Race Track Road. And you see very effectively the portica share and drop-off area here. You see the tower element anchoring the intersection and the scale of the restaurant here to the rear of the image. One of the things we've tried hard to do in the architecture of the building, unlike many other card rooms that you might see around the country, is to make this an endearing building to the community in sight. A lot of card rooms are very nondescript, simple boxes, no fenestration, not very engaging. This project wants to see the building very differently than the metal box that is the grandstand today. It wants to see it as a civic building. Even though the activities inside may be very private in nature, the architecture and the experience of how you enter the building wants to be very civic and engaging for the community. So that was our approach. That was our desire in terms of designing this. So the building, you, you would not know it's a card room in my opinion. It's clad very nicely with some nice materials. It has this nice covered drop-off which relates it to a hotel or a performing arts center or museum. It has the, the scale and features that any of those kinds of buildings might include and is very engaging for the end-user and the community. This view would be from the large parking lot to the south as if you were leaving your car, walking towards the, the card room element, which is here. You'll see to the right where the scale or the left, sorry, where the, the massing breaks down and this would be your administrative component, allowing daylighting opportunities for the individual offices. The next image here is further panning around the building. We're back onto Beach Road, looking from the vantage point of traveling east on Beach Road or the sidewalk. You're seeing the opposite perspective compared to the first slide. And you'll see the restaurant in the distance. You'll see the scale of the building start to break down as we incur other uses in the program and it's actually stepping back off the road in order to lessen or minimize the impact of the building on the road and not create too much of a street wall effect. And as the landscape drawings depicted, it's very articulated with landscaping to help soften that edge and create sort of a friendly buffer and transition to the building.
Could you tell me what the sign on the building says?
Excuse me?
Would you tell me what the sign on the building says?
The sign on the building?
See the sign right there?
Here?
Up there. Just to the right of that big tree right there. What is, I can't read it on my paper here too. What does it say?
No, to the right, right there.
Right there, where your things, what does that say?
What does that say? There's no sign there.
Those are windows.
Those are windows?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sitting here trying to squint and read the words. No wonder I'm not having any success. Sorry. So is there any signage on the building to say what it is? No, so it's just the sign coming in? Okay.
So the last image I'll share with you is an image of this. We're going to pan around here towards the east and look at a detail of that. My favorite image, I think it tells the story of how the restaurant endeavors to open itself up to the street. You can see the activity. You can imagine how this would be filled with the many tables and chairs and patrons out here, maybe some music playing. These are glass doors back here that open up to allow this to become an outdoor space as well. You'll see the landscaping that sort of hides the low-lying fence around this. But again, the activity that would occur there would make this very engaging. The effort here is not to just have an incidental restaurant or a food service establishment to service the patrons of the card room and the simulcast room, but it's to be a destination for the community, a restaurant that would allow people to see the card room and vice versa who may not have otherwise seen or maybe experienced those functions of the building, but certainly a destination for the community and one that the community would be proud of and that the operator would be proud of as well. I don't have any further remarks.
Are there any questions? At this time, we're going to take a break. We'll reconvene at 11:00 a.m. promptly.
Okay.
How are you?
I'm good.
Everything's good.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
You're a good pointer.
Talk through.
Whenever I have to.
Good.
I got it.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
You're a good pointer.
Talk through.
Whenever I have to.
Good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
You're a good pointer.
Talk through.
Whenever I have to.
Good.
I'm 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 good.
So yes, we had our first neighborhood meeting was held February 13th. We had, I think, about 29, 30 people that attended that. And we had our second neighborhood meeting last night, and both of those meetings were held at the track. So the questions we received last night, we had a representative from Meditera who wanted to understand the phased zoning and what uses were going to be allowed under the zoning. We had a question regarding the demolition of the building, when that would occur and what would happen to that location once the demolition is complete. We had a question about the tower element and what the purpose of the tower element was, and then just the timing of development moving forward. So hopefully, those are the questions we answered last night, and hopefully, we've answered those questions this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning, zoning board chairman and zoning board members. I'm Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. I'm here to present the staff presentation. Just to let you know, the applicant did cover a lot of the same topic materials that were included in our staff report and backup. So where there are duplicate issues, where staff is in agreement, we will go ahead and proceed, just in essence of time, out of respect for time. But please feel free to stop me if you would like for us to go ahead and go into greater specificity. We can go ahead and do that for you. For the review team, this is the list of staff, both city staff, agency staff, and outside consultants that were party to this review. And some of them, we do have in attendance here today. So if there's topics, we can go ahead and call those expert witnesses for those questions. On the request, it's on the agenda, so I'm not going to elaborate on that. When this was first advertised, there was a presumption that the property was 99-plus acres. However, after we got the final sketch in, it's actually 97.6 acres. So just to let you know that change. Citywide location map, everyone kind of knows where that is. And then this is the larger location map that we also use for advertising purposes. Just also to let you know, this type of public notice was different than what we typically do for zoning cases due to the size of the property. Given its size and being over 10 acres, we actually went ahead and ran a display ad for this request. So it did actually get more public notification than we typically see with our zoning requests. Overview, the applicant did a pretty thorough analysis on the historical use of the property from a zoning entitlement standpoint, the constitutional amendment background. Again, with the sufficiency review process, as they explained, initially, this rezoning request was on the nine plus or minus acres. But as we went through this, we definitely saw from the city's perspective, there were some things that we wanted to be able to condition that really dealt with the larger piece of the property. And in order to actually do that from a legal perspective, we had to bring the whole property in for the rezoning process. So we do appreciate the applicant's cooperation in doing that. Again, this was a pretty collaborative process, so we do appreciate that. And the two big items that we really wanted to go ahead and condition was the ability to have some level of comfort that that main facility for the grandstands would be demolished in a timely manner. So in order to do that, the zoning for the whole property had to come in, as well as the major interconnectivity of that quadrant. This property is located in our historic zone. It's also located in our quadrant and zone map of the conference of plan. So the ability to condition it for interconnectivity was very important from the city's standpoint. So we appreciate the applicant cooperating with us. The applicant also went over the expedited review process. I'll go into a little bit of detail in the Florida statutes, Chapter 550 section on the next slide, and it's also included in your backup as well. And John Dolmer and Derek can provide a little more guidance on that if there are additional questions. That also kind of wraps into the design review process and how we went ahead and looked at those outside consultant comments and what we could necessarily require them to develop into their plan moving forward. So this is the section of Florida statutes, and I apologize for all the text, but I didn't want to leave anything out. But the text in bold is really what kind of spearheaded staff's review on what we felt that we could go ahead and request of the applicant to update in their plan, this site-specific plan. So because this is an existing paramutual facility that did exist prior to 1981, there is language in statute where we essentially have to grant approvals unless we can show there is an immediate, justifiable and immediate hazard to health and safety of that proposed improvement. So I just wanted to kind of frame that background for you so you can understand why there were some things we could definitely request the applicant to do, but we kind of didn't have the other regulations we normally would put on other property owners because of them having these unsick statutory protections. Future land use, the applicant went into that in detail, so I really don't think we need to go over that unless you would like for me to do so. But this is the future land use map to your left and the existing zoning map to your right. Any questions on that, further elaboration? Okay. The original master concept plan, you know, where it started, this was, again, the original nine acres or so. You could see the access point was a little different. The parking lot design was somewhat different. But again, the zoning crest was on the nine acres. Based on our first round of comments, we did solicit comments from Tool Design Group and DPZ Co-Design because they were really our consultants helping us with the BDB Road visioning exercise that we were doing with the city. And so these are just excerpts from Tool Design, where he was really hoping that the applicant could go ahead and coordinate some more interconnections. And then, again, his reiteration of going ahead and implementing those and hoping that at some point, there could be opportunities for infill development as the market would support. And we're hopeful that the applicant will keep that in the back of their minds should the market support it and they wish to develop this property some more, that they really look at some other infill developments that would help complete our visioning for this quadrant. And then we have the DPZ Co-Design recommendations, which really just simply flipped the building and reoriented the drop-off area towards the front and implemented what they call a slip lane design. So those were kind of the major comments that those consultants had. We did go ahead and insert those into your packet so you could see it in its entirety. We also went ahead and provided the applicant's response to those specific comments, so you could see their opinions on those design matters, whether it be from a site functionality standpoint, utility constraints, safety measures, things like that. So you will see that in their response. But again, because of Chapter 550, there is only certain things that we necessarily could go ahead and require. So again, with collab...
But if I may hear, the applicant, in their presentation, stated that a lot of what they did in terms of design and how they located it... Hold on, just one second while I find my notes from the meeting. So yes, we had our, our first neighborhood meeting was held February 13th. We had, I think, about 29, 30 people that attended that. And we had our second neighborhood meeting last night, and both of those meetings were held at the track. So the questions we received last night, we had a representative from Meditera who wanted to understand the phased zoning and what uses were going to be allowed under the zoning. We had a question regarding the demolition of the building, when that would occur and what would happen to that location once the demolition is complete. We had a question about the tower element and what the purpose of the tower element was, and then just the timing of development moving forward. So hopefully, those are, those are the questions we answered last night, and hopefully, we answered those questions this morning.
Thank you. Proceed.
Good morning, zoning board chairman and zoning board members. I'm Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. I'm here to present the staff presentation. Just to let you know, the applicant did cover a lot of the same topic materials that were included in our staff report and backup. So where there are duplicate issues, where our staff is in agreement, we will go ahead and proceed, just in essence, of time out of respect for time. But please feel free to stop me if you would like for us to go ahead and go into greater specificity. We can go ahead and do that for you. For the review team, this is the list of staff, both city staff, agency staff, and outside consultants that were party to this review. And some of them, we do have an attendance here today, so if there's topics, we can go ahead and call those expert witnesses for those questions. On the request, is on the agenda, so I'm not going to elaborate on that. When this was first advertised, there was a presumption that the property was 99-plus acres. However, after we got the final sketch in, it's actually 97.6 acres. So just to let you know, that change. Citywide location map, everyone kind of knows where that is. And then this is the larger location map that we also use for advertising purposes. Just also to let you know, this, this type of public notice was different than what we typically do for zoning cases due to the size of the property. Given its size and being over 10 acres, we actually went ahead and ran a display ad for this request. So it did actually get more public notification than we typically see with our zoning requests. Overview, the applicant did a pretty thorough analysis on the historical use of the property from a zoning entitlement standpoint, the constitutional amendment background. Again, with the sufficiency review process, as they explained, initially, this rezoning request was on the nine plus or minus acres. But as we went through this, we definitely saw from the city's perspective, there were some things that we wanted to be able to condition that really dealt with the larger piece of the property. And in order to actually do that from a legal perspective, we, we had to rent the whole property in for the rezoning process. So we do appreciate the applicant's cooperation in doing that. Again, this was a pretty collaborative off process, so we do appreciate that. And the, and the two big items that we really wanted to go ahead and condition was the ability to have some level of comfort that that main facility for the grandstands would be demolished in a timely manner. So in order to do that, the zoning for the whole property had to come in, as well as the major interconnectivity of that quadrant. This property is located in our historic zone. It's also located in our quadrant and zone map of the conference of plan. So the ability to condition it for interconnectivity was very important from the city's standpoint. So we appreciate the applicant cooperating with us. The applicant also went over the expedited review process. I'll go into a little bit of detail in the Florida statutes, Chapter 550 section on the next slide, and it's also included in your backup as well. And John Dolmer and Derek can provide a little more guidance on that if there are additional questions. That also kind of wraps into the design review process and how we went ahead and looked at those outside consultant comments and what we could necessarily require them to develop into their plan moving forward. So this is the section of Florida statutes, and I apologize for all the text, but I didn't want to leave anything out. But the text in bold is really what kind of spearheaded staff's review on what we felt that we could go ahead and request of the applicant to update in their plan, this site-specific plan. So because this is an existing paramutual facility that did exist prior to 1981, there is language in statute where we essentially have to grant approvals unless we can show there is an immediate, justifiable and immediate hazard to health and safety of that proposed improvement. So I just wanted to kind of frame that background for you so you can understand why there were some things we could definitely request the applicant to do, but we kind of didn't have the other regulations we normally would put on other property owners because of them having these, it looks like statutory protections. Future land use, the applicant went into that in detail, so I really don't think we need to go over that unless you would like for me to do so. But this is the future land use map to your left and the existing zoning map to your right. Any questions on that, further elaboration? Okay. The original master concept plan, you know, where it started, this was again, the original nine acres or so. You could see the access point was a little different, the parking lot design was somewhat different. But again, the zoning crest was on the nine acres. Based on our first round of comments, we did solicit comments from Tool Design Group and DPZ Co-Design because they were really our consultants helping us with the Biddy Beach Road visioning exercise that we were doing with the city. And so these are just excerpts from Tool Design where he was really hoping that the applicant could go ahead and coordinate some more interconnections. And then, again, his reiteration of going ahead and implementing those and hoping that at some point, there could be opportunities for infill development as the market would support. And we're hopeful that the applicant will keep that in the back of their minds should the market support it and they wish to develop this property some more, that they really look at some other infill developments that would help complete our visioning for this quadrant. And then we have the DPZ Co-Design recommendations, which really just simply flipped the building and reoriented the drop-off area towards the front and implemented what they call a slip lane design. So those were kind of the, the major comments that those consultants had. We did go ahead and insert those into your packet so you could see it in its entirety. We also went ahead and provided the applicant's response to those specific comments so you could see their opinions on those design matters, whether it be from a site functionality standpoint, utility constraints, safety measures, things like that. So you will see that in their response. But again, because of Chapter 550, there was only certain things that we necessarily could go ahead and require. So again, with coll...
But if I may hear, the applicant, in their presentation, stated that a lot of what they did in terms of design and how they located it was due to security concerns. Do you agree with that?
I'm not an expert in their security matters.
Well, do you, does the city have an expert in that? Or...no?
No, not in paramutual design.
So, so you just accepted as a matter of fact what they're presenting?
No, I think if you listen to Jackie's presentation, you know, we recommended alternatives. They, they pushed back citing security concerns, but we laid out our, our positions in the staff report.
But if they cite a security concern, it isn't an incumbent upon the city to counter that or conversely, agree with that. But to leave it up in the air, I don't find terribly helpful.
Mr. Chairman, in my prior life, I've been involved with some casino operations and designs in Indiana, and security is a huge issue.
I understand that.
And, and the design incorporates that so that you can get your truck in, close the door, load it up with dollars and so forth. And I thought it was addressed by the architect, really.
Oh, it was. But I, I'm curious as to see whether the city accepts that or, because they have a different...if you accept it, then the DPZ alternative plan, if it was DPZ or O'Toole, is irrelevant, right? They would like you to turn the building. Well, we can't turn the building because we've got a security concern. So I, I respect that, but I'm kind of surprised that the city does not have any kind of an answer for that.
The answer to that is, we sent this application off as we would any other application, even though the use itself is very specialized and established under certain legislation. So those comments came back, and several of those comments, I think that you heard during the applicant's presentation, were incorporated in their design. They provided different features, they looked at different architectural styles, provided additional landscaping. There were a handful of items that they did incorporate into their plan. Those other areas that they did not want to incorporate into their plan were areas that were not directly related to the health and safety that we could justify requiring a condition. So to answer your question, it is not that we did accept or did not accept their position of security. It is that because there was not that connection with health and safety, they were not within our area of purview. And if they were not voluntarily wishing to comply with those or address those, there was little that we could do in terms of enforcing those conditions.
Counselor, question. The, the constitutional amendment passed in 2018. As I understand it, Florida statutes 550 predate that.
Correct.
Does the constitutional amendment have any effect on that prior statute, 550?
Well, Chapter 550 is, is extensive. It deals not only with the particulars of the various gambling enterprises, their taxing schemes, infrastructure schemes. So, you know, the constitutional amendment, to the extent it's in conflict directly with some of those provisions, such as dog racing itself, those would be, those would be trumped by the constitutional amendment. The issues that we've been addressing with respect to the design of this facility, I don't think are addressed at all because they're not within that same scope of those, the actual sections of Chapter 550 which address the infrastructure concerns and, and their ability to make certain decisions and the limitations placed on the city are not tied to dog racing in particular. But I mean, if you need additional clarification, I'm sure Mr. Powell can provide it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. So again, so now we're dealing with a master concept plan, two-phase approach, so we could go ahead and place conditions on those areas that we, we appreciate the applicant coordinating with us on, which really deal with the interconnectivity and the demolition of the building. So they could still also move forward with their phase one development. So you will see the two-phase master concept plan here, as the applicant had shown earlier. So it is a two-page master concept plan. Sheet one simply shows the distinctive phase lines with some notes on those relative to uses, and we'll get into that a little further. Then Sheet two is the actual specific plan. And, and what they did to go ahead and incorporate some of those designs that Mr. Lockwood had, and they did explain this, is the interconnectivity through the site to create that, the attempt of the block pattern with the ability for future interconnections throughout, rearranging this driveway because of the concerns we had here, but maintaining essentially the orientation of the building with the main focal points at the corner. The architectural renderings, I've seen these as well from the applicant, so again, I will not duplicate those. The landscape plan, I do want to let you know that there is a revised landscape plan that we have received, and that is due to the applicant working with us on relocating their compactor and dumpster enclosures. Before, they were a long Biddy Beach Road, and in an effort to work with us, they did go ahead and relocate those for us. So we do appreciate that. So that will change the EDC that's in your staff report packet, and we'll go ahead and update the ordinance accordingly. So again, just the areas in red where there's changes. There, we went over these cross-sections. But again, please stop me if you have additional questions. Now getting into kind of the substance of the conditions. So the uses you'll see enumerated in Condition Two of the staff report. Some to really point out to your attention is, we did go ahead and place conditions on consumption on premises, and those conditions are for indoor and outdoor consumption. And they are the typical conditions that we go ahead and use in other special exception applications. So there's an indoor operation where it can go ahead and operate until 2:00 a.m. The outdoor consumption is until 12:00 midnight daily. So as far as we know, the applicant had no objections to those conditions. So I would like to point that out to you. The other item is the five-year limitation on the temporary uses, and we can discuss that a little bit more as well. But if you read that language, the concern with staff is, is that in there, it, it also has language in there about accepting them from the time limitations. So, you know, we just passed some changes to the temporary use ordinance where we have done some changes relative to how many times a year a temporary use can be permitted and the duration. So those are changes. And the way that this current condition is written is they would be exempt from that. So again, in an effort to definitely understand what they want to do on Phase Two, just, we have to be mindful that there are some exceptions to the time limitations as we move forward with that discussion. So again, we can discuss that later, and John would be happy to do that. The development regu...
But that's a major...
Correct. So if we want to go ahead and do that at the end, or however you'd like to, if you want to address it now, we can, or we can wait till the end.
Why not address it?
Okay. Sure.
What do you have, Mr. Chairman, Standing Board? Part of our discussions with the applicant included a request of them to provide us a list of the temporary events, special events, all basically the permitted events that they have had, and I think they went back to a time when I was an undergraduate, identifying everything from circuses to concerts to boat shows. And the reason for that exercise was to recognize any of those temporary uses or, or events that predated the requirement to permitting so that we could include them as permitted uses. Because if they have been there prior to the requirement of a permit, there is no reason for them to, to get temporary events or, or to have a question as to whether they continue with those going into the future. There were a handful of those events that were included, and the rest of those, when it comes into different boat shows, concerts, those all received temporary events permits, either special event permits or temporary event permits for each of those. And what we decided as, as a compromise to recommend to you was the idea that those that required permits, they would have a period of five years in which to continue those operations. At the end of the five years, they would be required to either cease those operations or to come back in for permanent approval, or they could simply go under the temporary event permit like they've done previous to this zoning action. All of those options would be available to them. And there was a question during that discussion whether five years was enough, and I know that during their presentation, they had raised the point that maybe 10 years would be more appropriate. That's up to you. I, I believe that if, if you're not able to figure out if these temporary events can somehow be made permanent within five years, I, I think that maybe that lack of commitment may be enough to not continue them as permanent events. If this board, whatever time limit this board chooses, if you choose one, they would still be under the temporary event ordinance that the rest of the city must comply with. So it's not to say that they couldn't come back in with certain events or with certain festivals, concerts, whatever, but they would simply come under and permit those individually. So that condition does not eliminate their ability for these uses. It simply puts them under the same ordinance as the rest of the city after the five years as proposed.
Describe what the difference would be. I mean, why would you want to not...
Convenience. If, if I was...
Do they have to do more dotting of i's and crossing of t's, or what happens to happen?
Under the, under the current approval, most of those events that they have onsite would require approval from the city council in an application that comes in. Under what's proposed, they have five years where those, that approval would not be necessary.
But after that would be...
After that, they would. Now, keep in mind, there are certain things that still require permits. Fire department wants a permit every time you have a tent that's over 10 by 10. Certain people look for certain things. But as a zoning rule, as proposed, they would have five years to figure out how they wanted to handle these events going forward.
So does that mean that if they didn't hold an event like that within five years, it would no longer be in that category?
They could have multiple events, or they could have no events. They have a period of five years in which to enjoy those opportunities.
Oh, I see, okay. And then they automatically go...
Correct. And then after that five-year period...
I sort of misunderstood. I thought if, if they didn't use this opportunity within five years, it disappeared. But you're telling me that after five years...
After, after five years, as proposed, they would need to make a decision as to how they wanted to proceed with these. And if they came back in to have them permanently listed as permanent uses, they would need that approval. Or if they wanted to handle them under the temporary event ordinance, they could do that as well.
Counselor, do you, that was pretty much a legal discussion at the end. Is there anything you disagree with on that?
I, I think Mr. Dolmer did a fine job presenting that, and I, I would say that a couple of things in response to support our 10-year idea.
Well, we'll give you a chance to rebut. I'm just asking, on what he described as the current state of the law, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, we concurred on that and...
Okay. I'll give you an opportunity for rebuttal after they...
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on, development regulations are enumerated in Condition Three, and that is for Phase One, because again, Phase Two, there is no anticipated development occurring on that site. For neighboring compatibility, would you like me to go over that? The applicant did go, did go over that. I do want to touch on public participation. Ms. Smith-Michael did explain the neighborhood meeting process that did occur, so I won't cover that. But just to let you know, we did actually mail notices to property owners within 1,000 feet. The LDC requires 375, so, but the applicant actually gave us labels for 1,000 feet. So more people were notified. So that, so that was a great opportunity to notify the public. Also, property posting was conducted, and then we had the newspaper ad. So I did receive a couple of phone calls and then a few entities that did come in to talk to us to really understand what was going on. So Truck Side Donuts did come in and talk to me. It was more so the landowner, just to make sure that what, with this rezoning request, it wouldn't affect their ability to operate or future redevelopment. Also had a couple of calls from residents in Pine Haven. Some of them were seasonal, some had positive comments to share, they were glad to see the redevelopment. I had another individual that was happy for the redevelopment, but they were concerned about traffic and more so parking. They didn't think the facility had enough parking. So, which was interesting because we as staff thought they had too much parking. But I did tell him I would relate his concerns, and I did share with him the number of parking spaces. But I did want to go ahead and put that on the record for everyone. Also with our mail notices, we provide the opportunity for the public to mail notices back to us to let us know if there's concerns or support. And I received about four, and they all were in support of the project. So I just wanted to share that with you. Environmental and stormwater, again, the applicant had a very thorough analysis. And two, I wanted to point out, the stormwater management, there actually was a narrative that was provided. It was weaved into their consistency analysis, but that is included in your backup in terms of the discussion of how the water management system would function and operate. We did go ahead and have, we do have conditions in the draft zoning ordinance relative to water quality and ICP, ICPR modeling, which are some amendments that the city is pursuing at this time. So the applicant has agreed to those conditions. And as well, the applicant explained, there's some improvements to racetrack road for, for drainage conveyance. For environmental, again, they had a pretty thorough analysis on those items where you'll see our, our findings are relatively the same. And we do appreciate them attempting to preserve those two pine trees into their site design. Traffic considerations, just to go into a little more detail on the median, and I do have Stuart Smith here, our city engineer, he's really been spearheading the coordination between our traffic engineer, Lee County Department of Transportation, and then our just general experience with this intersection. But again, for site access, the applicant went over the existing site parameters for Phase One that you'll see here. I also want to point out the interconnections as well for future development, the existing interconnections through the site. As they explained, this is really the main entrance. We do understand there's other access points, but this is really the one that the public uses. And we have conditions that they will maintain that connectivity through this development. So we do appreciate that, and we also appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with us on the interconnectivity in this quadrant. So you will see conditions in there relative to maintaining connectivity, working with us to establish grid network, and a right-of-way reservation for Phase Two. So we appreciate those efforts. Back to the median. So as they explained, Lee County DOT is, is really a key part in this as it relates to the intersection. The local development order is in under review. It's a more detailed traffic analysis that's being considered. But, so with racetrack road, the applicant is proposing to make some improvements. So we're, we're getting some pavement widening, turn lanes, bicycle connections, sidewalks. So that's, those are improvements for racetrack road, which currently is not designed to a, a city standard for local or private roads for that matter. So, so this is definitely an improvement for that situation. But the location of this facility at the inner, at the intersection and the proximity of these entrance points, staff had a concern with the vehicular conflicts and just all the development that's existing and that's planned for the area and how they would manage that, that intersection. And really what it comes down to is the left turn lane storage here, this queue. So that's why you'll see the condition in there about the median up to a certain point is because we don't want to jeopardize the left turn lane storage and during school drop-off in the afternoons, that's one of the peaks. And there's a lot of industrial traffic coming from the K-9 industrial parks. There's a lot of traffic that utilizes this intersection. And with the build-out, there's going to be an expansion at the charter school, and the rest of the property in Greyhound Square is vacant, so this is really going to be a busy intersection at some point. So you will see conditions in there relative to the median. So, and here's an aerial, just for an example, a Google image where you can just see that left turn lane storage. So that's the purpose for the, the medians as proposed by staff. If you have any other detailed questions on that, I have Stuart Smith here as an expert, and he can relay those comments. Conference of plan considerations, again, Paul and I pretty much summarize consistency with the same policies. So unless you want me to elaborate some more, it's pretty much ironed out in our staff report on the consistency analysis for certain key provisions in our future land use element and our transportation element and infrastructure element. Deviation, so this is the area, other area of disagreement between the applicant and staff. And as you very well know from our joint workshop last year, there's, there's two elements that staff and even you as a board consider when you evaluate a deviation request, and those I have outlined for you up at the top. And, and we do recognize and appreciate that they want to change the name, and we really have no objection if they just want to change the name, but we do understand that the copy also includes other uses that could be of significant value, or they would want that 12, I'm sorry, that more than 25% copy area that would affect more than just the name. So, so the deviation request is to... So the deviation request is to go ahead and change the whole copy. So again, staff has no objection to them wanting to change the name, but for the full copy, it's, it definitely, we don't see how it enhances the plan development objectives. We definitely see how it improves weigh finding, so that could be a public safety item. So we think in terms of the two-prong test, they meet the second prong, but we have some concerns relative to the first. However, we are just a recommending entity. The zoning board and the City Council can disagree with us. So that is definitely within your purview. And so what we did on the next slide is we said if you want to approve the deviation, we have some conditions that we would recommend that you consider. And the applicant has accepted those. They have no objections to augmenting the sign base to make it look like a monument sign, landscaping it, and taking it down to 10 years. So that is something that is available. It's just it's such a beautiful building that they're erecting, and we were just hoping that they would want to mimic a sign that would complement that design. Findings. We found that they met all of the findings, as we are limited by Florida statutes, with the one exception with the deviation. So if you'd like for me to go over those in detail, I can. But they're also outlined in the staff report. Our approval with conditions, again, all the conditions are labeled in the staff reports. I've kind of tried to label them consecutively so you could see the topics that we covered. And if there's any specific questions, we are happy to answer.
I'd like to ask about the sign. I assume that the Benita Beach Road corridor has some requirements about signs. Could you tell me what those requirements are?
Sure. So we did a sweeping amendment change to our sign code in 2015. And what we did is we really wanted to focus on place-making signs. So the permanent ground signs that we allow within the city limits now are all monument style signs. So for other properties within the city, you are allowed an eight-foot-tall by 12-foot-wide monument sign. 25% of it has to be dedicated to architectural features. The rest could be for copy area. In the Benita Beach Road corridor, we allow seven-foot-tall monument signs, but they can still maintain 12-foot in width. We also allow for more than one sign if you have so much road frontage. So in this case, there's definitely more than 330 feet of road frontage. So there is an ability to put two monument signs on Benita Beach Road.
Is there a sign coming off of 041 into the property there?
There is an existing sign.
Is that a-
It's not a billboard, but it's a rather large sign.
Is that a question here too, or is that-
We have not, they're not proposing any changes to the sign, so that would maintain its non-conforming status based on the Land Development Code.
Okay, so as I understand it, the point of this requirement is to try to make Benita Beach Road, which is the entrance to our city, look better, be a more welcoming place, be something that's maybe more consistent so that you have a sense of place. And I guess my sense is that this is, I think they have done a nice job with the building, that this is a place where you'd certainly want to be part of the effort to make this a beautiful entrance into our city. And I can't, other than sentimentality, figure out any other compelling reason, to me at least, for leaving this old sign. I'm not even particularly enthused about making it look like a monument sign. Why not just make it a monument sign? It can't be a very large part of the cost of doing this. Unless I, I mean, I need to have a better sense of why, other than it's our old sign and we'd like to keep it, that there's a reason for this.
Has the historical society made any comments towards that?
They have not, but we also have not requested input, and I don't know if that would fall under the purview. We do have some regulations for the age of buildings. If they're over a certain age, they do get routed to the historic board for evaluation, but not for signage.
Certainly, if there's a historic element here, it might be the track itself.
Yeah.
And that's being torn down.
Yeah.
Right?
Usually, the age of buildings is 50 years. They're just shy.
Didn't I see somewhere in here that the applicant is willing to replace the base of the sign so that it corresponds to the architectural features of the rest of the building?
They'll augment it, so they'll add kind of, call it like a skirting. And I don't know if you're familiar with the capital P on US 41 as you head towards Collier. That actually was a pylon or pole sign at one time, and they actually put a base around that pole. So you can engineer it. I think to go ahead and reduce it to make it fit with code, you're looking at some structural engineering and things that are out of my realm, but I would suspect that that would come to play if you try to lower the sign, that to do engineering.
How tall is the sign now?
Just over 15 feet.
15 feet. That would be part of it.
Any further questions of Ms. Jensen at this point? Does the city have anything further that they wish to offer?
Yes, sir.
Paul, you have some rebuttal?
Rebuttal, that scares me.
Some comments.
I would like to address two things with a predicate. But for chapter, for Amendment 13, we wouldn't be here today. That's simple. This track would continue to operate as it's operated for the last 47 years, and we wouldn't be here. That's A. B, there are no plans for the other 90 acres at this point in time. And the reason for that is, is that until November's election, the Haveneck family assumed they were going to be continuing operating this, and they didn't have to address the other 90 acres. So that all didn't happen, and now we're here to get a replacement card room and simulcasting and restaurant. We're going to tear that down, the old facility, which is huge. You can see it for miles. And we have a pre-existing non-conforming sign grandfathered in. And we have the development order from before where, under that development order, the owners agreed to change the sign from Naples Fort Myers to Benita Springs. So all these things are in play.
When was that development order put in effect?
Many moons ago. Do you know when that, 2012? 2012.
It's expired, hasn't it? It's no longer a development order. Is that correct?
The development order was for the casino gaming and-
What was, I think you're referring to is a development agreement for the possibility of slot machines. And with that came the discussion with, one of those areas was the sign. And under that negotiation, the owners of the facility agreed to change the name of the facility from Naples Fort Myers to Benita Springs. It wasn't a development order in terms of engineering approval. It was simply a development agreement in terms of how to handle the operations of the slots.
That never expires.
I mean, I would, in the technical term, I'd just say it's suspended because there is no slot machine.
Overcome by events?
Correct.
So, so the giant building's going to be torn down. It could be seen for miles around. We have a sign that exists that we can keep, but we can't change the copy on it more than 25% a year without losing our non-conformity. So all we really want to do is, for the short term, is change the sign to read Benita Springs, not Naples Fort Myers. And we've agreed that at the end of 10 years, which is a finite term as opposed to God knows when, to tear it down and replace it with a conforming sign. Now, I know you may not be interested in this, but I represent a number of retailers all around the country, and half of my life is spent fighting for pylon signs. Okay? And the general consensus is, and I've discussed this with Mr. Dahmer, is when a municipality or county changes its ordinance outlawing a pylon sign and mandating a move to a monument sign, which is usually what's happening, they normally give you 10 years to do it. So when we were talking about making a compromise here on letting us change the copy now and keeping our sign, I proposed 10 years. And Mr. Dahmer, at that time, said he thought it was reasonable that we do it if the deviation were granted. So that's what we're asking for. We're not saying we're never going to conform, but we want to have the magnitude of the sign, I hate that word, that's there to let everybody know that because the building was torn down at the old Grandstand Clubhouse, that we're not out of business, that we're still there. And we think that's a branding benefit to us, and it's a marketing benefit to us that we think can be purposeful for us for 10 years and thereafter it won't really be necessary. And people go back to Chicago, and they come back, the buildings go on, geez, why the racetrack? Oh, they outlawed dog racing. Oh, okay. Let's go over here for dinner. As opposed to let's go play cards or do simulcasting. So we think it's a value to our business to do it, but we're willing to give it up. So that's the sign. The other issue is the period of time. We had asked for 10 years for our temporary approved permits, that what we approved uses. And what we were saying is, is that we're not going to not get a temporary permit every time we have a carnival or a circus. We're going to get that because the city has requirements for the numbers of toilets, safety considerations, police, whatever the requirements are for that function. We just don't want to have to come in and ask for the permitted use of a circus or a carnival. But we're willing, we're obviously going to get permits, so I'd like to have all the other inspection aspects of that event cared for under your land development ordinance. And we asked for 10 years because to come back in on a one-by-one basis and lose our calendar exemption would just be kind of onerous. And the feedback we've gotten is that the public likes the carnivals, the circuses, the concerts. They like that. So we thought, well, since we don't have a plan for the balance of the 90 acres, we could at least get our business done here on the new facility. That might chew up five years of learning time and marketing and branding. And if we had 10 years, that would just take a little bit of heat off us, and nothing's really going to change with the site. I mean, the site's going to just continue to function as it has for the last 10 years. So that's why we were asking 10 years.
Anything further, Mr. Paul?
I'm done. Unless the board has any questions with Mr. Savin regarding the operation that's proposed. And if they do, we'd be happy to bring Mr. Savin forward. If you're not, you know, if you don't have any questions about the operation, then we're concluded.
No further questions. Does the city have anything further?
Nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Public comment. Please state your name and address, please.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Amy Tabo, and I'm an attorney with Pavey's Law Firm in Fort Myers. Our address is 1833 Hendry Street, Fort Myers, Florida, 33901. Our firm represents Racetrack Petroleum, who is the owner of the parcel located at the southeast corner of Benita Beach Road and Racetrack Road. As y'all have already discussed today, we are opposed to Condition 8J, which required the installation of the raised concrete traffic separator down the center of Racetrack Road. I would like to note that we are not opposed to the rezoning itself. We fully support the rezoning. We are simply opposed to Condition 8A. Currently, access to this site is available directly from Racetrack Road onto Furlong Street, as already discussed. Also, as previously discussed, the installation of the median would require drivers, including not only patrons, but the refueling trucks and other distributors, to circumvent Furlong Road, drive south to Performance Lane, and circle back up around the Charter School in order to access the Furlong Street access point. To approve this condition would result in a substantial and immediate adverse impact to Racetrack's property rights and business. Conversely, the city has not met its burden of proof to establish that such a median would be required or justified to support some public need by competent and substantial evidence. In fact, the only technical data that has been set forth regarding traffic engineering data that is site-specific is that which was contained in the TIS submitted by TR Transportation Consultants, as already discussed. And as Mr. Trish has already mentioned, the net impacts from the site as proposed would actually decrease. The existing levels of service would also be maintained. The city has asserted today that the median would be required to accommodate left storage, left turn storage on the road. The city has not set forth any data to justify this, and it has not met its burden of proof. Accordingly, we request that if you do approve this rezoning request, that you do so under the condition that Condition 8J would be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
My name's Drew Fitzgerald. I'm with Delisi Fitzgerald. I was the civil engineer that assisted Racetrack Petroleum develop their site. I'm here today to also speak on behalf of their interest with that property. Furlong Street is a critical aspect of the operations at that store. The deliveries all come in through Furlong Street, including the larger trucks that were mentioned earlier. To close that access, you either have two bad options. You either have to go down Performance Lane, where you have parent pickup and parent deliveries twice a day, plus you've got a playground in front of the school. You either go down that road with your large delivery trucks, or you ask the large delivery trucks to try to navigate a hairpin driveway off of Benita Beach Road, which all it takes is one vehicle to be in the way, and they're not going to be able to make that turning movement. So on behalf of Racetrack, I would respectfully ask that you not approve Condition 8J. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Hearing none. What is the wishes of the board?
I'd like to hear the city's position again on Condition HA.
Well, I'm sorry, was it 8J?
Or whatever the, yeah.
Okay.
It's J.
The city-
It's J.
J. That's the median. The city's position is that it's not requesting to close any access. It's simply adding a median function as a traffic control device out of safety concerns. And Stuart Smith, the city's engineer, can come speak on those issues. This is a privately maintained right-of-way, and so therefore is requested as a condition of this development. If this was a public median, we could close this at will by adding that as a restriction. As far as competent substantial evidence, this hearing is on the uses, not on access issues. But I'll ask Mr. Stewart to discuss the safety concerns that the city had with respect to that median.
Okay. Stewart.
Stuart Smith, Community Development Engineer. And I've been given testimony here before, so if you have any questions in my experience, I'd be happy to discuss it with you. As far as, as indicated by our attorney, the safety concern is the biggest reason that median is put there. As staff has presented in its presentation today, the queuing that already exists there for that left turn lane at Benita Beach Road, northbound left turn lane, is already present. Increased development of this site, and as been indicated in the future around this area, is going to continue. You put demand on that left turn storage, and it's not safe to have intersections coming in and people trying to butt into that left-hand turn lane. For that reason, we think now is the proper time in the interest of safety to put that median there. That's why we're proposing, and the developer has responded. So during the development order review, they're going to put the median there at our request. I just want to add that there, as far as Racetrack Fuel, there are other access points into Racetrack Fuel that can accommodate their fuel trucks. They might have to come in from a different direction. They might not be able to come just down I-75 and west on Benita Beach Road. They might have to come in through 041 and/or modify their current entrance to make it accessible off Benita Beach Road. Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Did I understand that the way it is proposed, that they could come in and go over that medium a little bit? Did I hear that or something? For, for commercial vehicles to come in?
Well, as Mr. Fitzgerald indicated, the, the size of their fueling trucks, there is a conflict coming off of Benita Beach Road and making that, that turn. But that could be considered for modification to make it work. Thank you.
What is the wishes of the board?
Well, I suppose we should vote on the case.
We, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion of any kind to accept, reject, whatever?
I would make a motion. I got, first of all, I got to thank staff and the applicant. I think they did their homework well. Got a few glitches with, with Racetrack, but that was, that was there when before Racetrack even decided to build in there. So I can't really decide with that. My personal feeling, I think it would be good for the area, and my motion is approved.
With the condition?
With the condition, naturally.
So the conditions as proposed by the city?
Right.
So that would mean that there would be no ability to change the sign. They, they want to deny it on the basis of, of the copy.
Mm-hmm. Oh, no, I don't think...
It would be limited to, it would be limited to 20 or 25% per year.
That isn't what I think. I don't think it says that, Larry. I think it says that, that they can change the sign, but they have to do the monument-like base to it in order to do it.
Right.
And the, the language is a little confusing because of the type of request. We're recommending denial of a 100% copy change. We would recommend and support the change, whatever the percentage is, to amend Benita, or I'm sorry, Fort Myers Naples to Benita Springs with the addition of the skirting or the, or the attempt to create more of a monument sign.
On the existing sign, as is?
Of the existing sign, yes, sir.
And the, the, the second area of disagreement, this motion would say that they have five years for the temporary uses.
That's the, that's the other question to, to answer.
That's the other, so that your motion is, do I hear a second to the motion?
A second to the motion.
Discussion.
Do we also want to say that it also includes that barrier in the middle of the road across from Racetrack? Because that's one of your conditions too, isn't it?
It is a condition.
So it would be all the, all the conditions, plus the two deviation issues.
And I, I'll just, I'll just clarify for you on making the recommendation on, on condition 8J. After this, I'm going to speak with Ms. Tabo and Mr. Fitzgerald about working with the city engineer on trying to make sure that they have access, and if we have to make additional modifications, either on Benita Beach Road or to this median at the development order stage. And so I may incorporate that change before City Council, but I wasn't aware of their concerns until, until the meeting, so I'll...
Fair enough.
So, so you're saying we, we don't have to amend this?
To address that, no, I'll, I'll try and address that before the City Council tomorrow.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's a good approach.
Counselor, you have a legal question you want to raise?
Does the motion include the deviation for the sign or a denial of the deviation?
The motion...
Includes the deviation.
It includes the denial of...
It includes...
No, no.
The deviation as conditioned by, with the condition.
It includes a deviation as conditioned by the monument around the base.
And as written, would allow for the change in copy from Naples, Fort Myers to Benita Springs, and would also the addition of skirting to make it a monument sign.
So, so just to clarify, if, if the motion is to approve the ordinance as drafted, it would allow the change in copy with the skirting, but limited only to change necessary to make the, the wording change? And it would be a five-year limitation on temporary uses?
Can I ask you a question?
Wasn't there a limit on how long they had with the sign that way? Or does it, can they go?
That's in the, that's in the condition.
It is too. Doesn't it say a 10-year limit on the sign that way? Okay. So that we can make sure all those pieces. Actually, what we're saying is, as written by the staff, we accept the staff report, and that gets all of that in.
That's correct. Any further discussion?
I'd like to suggest that we have a reading of what we're going to vote on.
The staff report.
Do you want to read the ordinance?
No, no. Read the...
The, the motion would be to adopt the, the recommendation, the proposed ordinance and conditions as laid out in the staff report.
Very good.
Yes, then that's part of the staff report.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Please call the roll.
Committee member, member Richard Donley?
Yes.
Committee member Barbara Craig?
Yes.
Chairman Kerlander?
Yep.
Committee member James Worster?
Yes.
Committee member Russ Wynn?
Yes.
Committee member Robert N. Serby?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice day, folks. The next matter, before, before we do anything here...
Next matter, we're all going next slide.
What is the, is Benita Lakes the, the next matter?
Um, who else? Next matter?
I have...
Yes.
Hang, hang on a sec.
We can rearrange the agenda if you want to do the continuing...
Is there a...
Benita Lakes is the next one, please.
That's, that's, it's going to take a while. I, I have to, I have to get out at some point.
Are we calling, are we calling Benita Lakes now? Or are you going to take a break?
No, we don't have Vision. The Vision Baptist has been...
I wanted to talk about that.
Oh, you want to?
Do you want to take a break?
Well, if you want to talk about it, call, call them up now.
Yeah, I...
It's a very quick thing.
That'd be all right, because I wanted to make you aware of how this got adjourned. I think it's important that you hear this.
Call Benita Lakes.
All right.
No, not Benita Lakes, the, the Vision Tower.
Sorry to make your, your...
Benita Lakes.
You could just say member, that wouldn't, you'd have to say committee member. Just say member.
I want to tell you why.
I just think that's easy.
How it got postponed.
And then, then everybody's the same, and you don't have to worry about titles.
Understand what happened here, because it may be...
Barbara Craig, but just say member Craig, and member, you don't have to say committee member, just say member.
Mr. Dolmer. Before, Mr. Dolmer?
Sir.
Before we proceed with the Benita Lakes case, the, the item on the agenda, item C, the Vision Baptist Church cellular tower. Now, this is the second adjournment.
Yes, sir.
If I understand that the reason that you are requesting an adjournment is because material of substantial substance was provided to you at the very last moment...
Yes, sir.
That the day that, the final day that they could submit anything, which was just the end of last week...
Yes, sir.
They submitted substantial. So with the permission of the board, I would like to say that this is the second adjournment, and this is because they wouldn't agree to an adjournment on this. You had to use your adjournment. I would say that, that in the event either the city or the applicant provides a last-minute submittal of this sort of substantive matter, that we will, we as a board will exercise our right to request still an additional adjournment. So my, I would urge you all to, to please get your, you know, urge them to submit on time, use of it on time, and I think we'll be happy.
Yes, sir, and I do apologize. I don't like advertising hearings only to, to push them off to a later date. However, based upon the complex nature of this type of review, I don't want to bring something to you until it's ready, and this just is not ready.
To that, Mr. Chairman, to that issue, and I said, I spent quite some time this weekend studying that last case. Came in this morning, I had a new packet that had something totally different or amended that, heardly I had a chance to go through it, and the presentation made it very clear. But I would, I would prefer to not get a packet when I walk in the door that changes what I've been had prior.
I understand.
Thank you.
So let me ask you a question. On the Benita Lakes case...
Yes.
How long, ma'am, is your presentation? Give me a rough idea.
It could be three and a half minutes.
And how long will, is the applicant?
Six or seven minutes.
Great, so I can, I can still be here and...
Okay.
If that's all right with you.
Yes.
And then you'll...
Would love to have you. Stay here. Thank you.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to, or is the city going to proceed first?
Can I just call the case? This would be Plan Development 18-56179 for Benita Lakes Plan Development Amendment. I apologize, I do have a brief packet. We changed one line in the staff report, which I will explain, and I received additional comments from residents, just so you are aware. 179 or 178? 56179.
Well, we'll...
We have the applicant. She's going to hand out some additional...
Okay, but in the meantime, the applicant, you want to...
Okay. If the applicant, you want to get, go ahead and get started, you can. The applicant indicated he'd been previously sworn. Just one line.
I'm going to have to change my...
Can you give us your name, please?
Yes. It's Ron, last name Grimming. I was going to change my introduction slightly, because I intended to start it out by saying "good morning," but I think now I have to tell you it's, it's "good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, zoning board members and city staff. I'm Ron Grimming. I'm the vice president of the Benita Lakes Homeowners Association, and we are requesting your approval of a Plan Development Amendment. To better understand our request, it's important to consider the following about Benita Lakes. Benita Lakes was developed in 2011 initially by Toll Brothers, and it was completed in 2018. There's 268 single-family homes ranging from 2,000 to 4,000 square feet, and we occupy about 120 acres. During the summer of 2018, a number of residents had been applying for either generator requests or pool requests, and they were being denied by the city due to the five-foot side yard Previously, the city had approved more than 60 generator requests and about 140 pool installation requests. Some of those were done during the initial construction project when Toll was building, and, and many of them were done after the fact. It should be noted that none of these existing...
Were they within the five-foot setback, or were they over the five?
They were, they were beyond the five-foot setback, yeah. They were, they would not have been in compliance. It should be noted that none of these existing mechanical pad encroachments has had any negative impact or impeded drainage. And perhaps if I could borrow your highlighter a little bit, that might help. We tried to come up with some photos that would give you an idea of some of the previous approvals, and you can see the proximity of the homes. These are typically about 10 feet apart. You can see air conditioning units here that were installed by the developer, another air conditioner on the other side. You can see a generator on that particular photo, another generator here, air conditioning units that were basically installed right across from one another.
What is the reason that the, that the generators have to be installed on the side rather than in the rear? Is it because the meters are on the side?
Typically, that's where the gas lines come in, and you also want to have proximity to where your electric is, and so typically they will install them as close to the electric box, which is mounted in the garage, as they can on the exterior of the building. And if you look back here, you can see a, a pool pump that's way back toward the back of that property, and there's another generator there. Our current challenge is that we currently have about 25 pool generator requests pending. Some are pending here at the city, at the permitting stages, and many others are pending through our architectural review process and have not been submitted to the city because Our request is to add a deviation 13 to the Benita Lakes Plan Development, and that is to modify the side yard setback from mechanical pads from the current five-foot to a zero-foot setback. This would allow residents to install mechanical pads for whole-house generators, pool equipment, and air conditioning units. What actions have we taken? We met extensively with community development officials to understand the requirements, and I want to recognize Director Dolmer, Tricia Goff, and special recognition for Mary Zizo, who helped us through this process in trying to understand the application, which we've been at this for close to a year now. We filed the application with the city for the Plan Development deviation. We received feedback from the city. We made adjustments as required, and we refiled. We held multiple meetings with community residents, explained the process and the requirements, and the residents indicated an overwhelming support. And in particular, one of the things that was emphasized was the ability to have emergency power for medical equipment, oxygen concentrators, dialysis machines, ventilators, and the refrigeration for certain types of medication. If the request is approved, there would be no increase in density or intensity within Benita Lakes, no decrease in buffers or open zone required by the LDC, no known impact on public resources or infrastructure, no impact on landscaping to the preserve areas, and no impact to surrounding land use. And additionally, no impact on lot drainage based on the following proposed conditions that we had discussed with staff, which was the deviation would apply only to mechanical pads. The equipment shall be a minimum of 10 foot from other equipment on the same or adjacent property. Generators will be situated as far away as possible from the abutting dwellings, windows, and doors. The generator pre-selected exercise times, which usually occurs once a week, would be between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And then permit application would include exhibits showing how installation will not Additionally, drainage exhibits include the following: the location of proposed mechanical pad with full measurements, existing elevations, drainage arrows, existing landscaping, existing gutters and downspouts... existing landscaping, existing gutters and downspouts, other elements that might exist between the adjacent homes, and a narrative showing how drainage flow will not be impeded. Also, the city staff has proposed that when a mechanical equipment is to be located less than four feet from the property line, that the following may be required. And that's the written HOA approval. That's approval from the adjacent property owner. Elevated platform to ensure drainage is not obstructed. The elevated platform would be, they're requesting the city is, that it be one foot of clearance under the pad so that drainage may continue to flow. Gutters and downspouts to reroute drainage. Installation of yard drains if necessary. Landscaping alterations to ensure proper drainage flow. And surveys when the job is complete, as well as a final grading and engineering inspection would be required in order to obtain a certificate of building completion. In addition, during our discussions with city staff, they asked us if we could provide a sample drainage exhibit, and we contracted with Grady Minor to provide that exhibit, which would demonstrate how the offset of mechanical equipment... Oops. Using the wrong instrument here. You can see there's pool equipment there and across on the other side, and there's a 10-foot section between them, and the same on this side, with still the ability for the movement of water drainage to flow through the swale area. And we thank you for consideration of our request.
Could you explain to us exactly what the city requirements are at the moment?
The current city requirement is that you must have a five-foot setback in order to install a mechanical pad. And so unfortunately, because of the distance between the houses in many aspects of our community, you only have a total of 10 feet. So you've only got five feet on each side, which technically would even preclude the installation of air conditioning units. So it's a difficult situation, in particular with the generators. And there's different sizes of pads. The air conditioning pads require about four feet from the concrete block wall, and they're about eight feet long if you're going to put a heater and the appropriate pool equipment on it. The generators present a little bit of a different problem because the recommendation is, from the manufacturer, that they be anywhere from 18 to 24 inches away from the concrete block wall. Then put that on a three-foot pad, you're five and a half feet or so, or four and a half to five feet, away from the concrete block wall, which essentially would preclude the installation of generators. So that's the predicament that we're in, and that's why we're making the request to go to a zero setback.
Do you find that a lot of the need for the generator is because of health reasons as you're in that area there?
Many of them are, and I think the other sort of feedback that we got is we have an aging population. There are many residents that are contemplating, well gee, we might need access to that kind of capability should there be a long-term electrical outage. And for one who was here during Irma, I have a generator. We were very, very fortunate, it was tremendous and great to have it.
A lot of neighbors visiting you, huh?
Yeah.
I can't help but say that this seems to be the result of perhaps some unwise permission by the city to allow 10 feet between houses. If you're going to have your own regulations that require more than that for things like this, that that's too close. But we allowed it, so I think that the onus is on us.
You know, there's great planning, and there's not-so-great planning, and then there's awful planning.
Yeah, and this is nobody...
This goes in the category of, let's give the developer whatever he wants. They want to squeeze the houses right on top of each other, let's do it.
But then we're going to...
And this was built at a time, if I might say, when there's... You know, this goes back to 2011, at the time when generators in Florida were pretty common by then. And still, five-foot sidelines? You've got to be kidding me. Come on. And now we're faced with this. You know, their request is reasonable, but they've been put in a position because people like us sat up here and said, oh, this is great, developer wants to put 300 homes into space for 250.
And it has come home to roost.
Let's do it, why not? Development.
I wasn't here.
I mean, this is awful.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make...
Embarrassing.
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, we've got to hear the city first.
You guys wrote a letter complaining about this, don't jump ahead.
Right. Let's hear the city.
I agree entirely with that. I just want to point out the one part that we did change in the staff report to actually provide an alternate plan in the event that an applicant does not require all this information. So I can go through it if you'd like, or I can just mention that one point that's changed.
Tell me what the point is.
If you go to condition 6i.
6i?
It states that any of those items may be modified if an acceptable plan is provided, meaning they may not always need an elevated pad in the event that they have additional drainage area.
Yes, I don't think I read it.
Go ahead, James. Any rebuttal from the... to the city?
Absolutely not.
Great. So the... that's closed. Now, public comment. Hearing none. What is the wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of the request.
And I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none. Everybody satisfied that they said all that they want to say? All the roll, please.
Committee member Craig?
Yes. We got the right name now.
Chairman Kurlander?
Yes.
Committee member Worcester?
Yes.
Committee member Winn? Committee member Insirpi? And committee member Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, everybody. We have one more, right?
Yeah. Yes.
What is the last of the matter? The NCH signage. Oh, but before we get to the sign...
I'm glad it got resolved. I hope it's totally resolved.
We have heard the sign case previously.
Right, completely.
They were asked to come back and provide us with some further details. I think I got time here.
Okay.
Can we proceed? Is the applicant here?
Yeah, we don't need to go through the whole thing again.
Yeah, right. If you go through this thing, you'll see this is... They amended it, no problem.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Shannon with Studio Plus, representing Naples Community Hospital. I worked for the architecture firm that was hired to design and construct the building in question today.
There's a... something, when I reviewed this matter, that came off. In the conditions of approval, the... as I read the documents, it says that after 5:00 p.m. the light will be dimmed.
Dimmed or shut completely off.
Or shut completely off. But if it's dimmed, what it doesn't say is... What are the original lumens that are requested, or why? I mean, I think we speak in terms of lumens these days. But, for example, if you're coming in and saying, well, I'm going to have a sign of 50,000 lumens, and you cut it back to 25,000, that's not helping the neighbors very much. You know what I'm saying? We don't have a baseline. You're saying, I'm going to cut 50%. 50% of what?
I don't have the answer to that question.
There's no... nothing there that we could...
I think we'd prefer to turn it off altogether after...
So you don't have an objection if we say after 5 o'clock you turn it off?
No, sir.
Good. That solves that problem.
It's close.
It keeps it simple.
Sure, sweet.
Otherwise, you know, I've got a problem.
I completely understand. The only reason the sign would be illuminated is because, as we know, when we get into the winter months, there's durations of time where the business may still be open until 5 or 6 o'clock, but it's a little bit difficult to see during the dusk hours. So we would just have it shut off as soon as business is closed for any of the outpatient services of the building.
Well, let's set a time, not whenever the operations close.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll set a time.
Which standard operating hours for outpatient service? 6 o'clock? Would be no later than 6 o'clock. I put together a couple of slides. I apologize I wasn't here at the last meeting, I was actually on vacation. I hope that what I put together today will help a little bit better graphically represent what we're trying to do on the site. And I would like to iterate that really our main focus here today is the patient's safety. And I'll jump into that in a couple of points. We go to the next slide? Oh. So real quick, the first slide I put together here just gives us a quick overview of timelines. A lot of this you may already be aware of. The public notices went out via mail, there was 143 total mailed out. We also held a neighborhood meeting at the facility on the second floor in the outpatient services center. We had no objections at that time, and I believe those reports were filed with the request for exception. And then, of course, June 25th was the meeting I was not able to attend, so I apologize. We asked for a continuance to come back today to kind of show you everything in detail. The reason for our request, which I believe staff had approved and understood our standpoint, we thought, I'll let them speak to their findings. First and foremost is the patient's safety. We provided some references that helped reinforce that. The FGI guidelines for healthcare design and construction is what we have to use based on state requirements for designing a healthcare facility, whether it's inpatient or outpatient. In those guidelines, we've provided some references that also talk about how we have to properly provide signage and wayfinding throughout the site and entrances to all the building main modes. Also, we provided a letter from the director, or I should say, the nurse manager of the ED, Brandt. We provided a signed letter documenting several cases of some of patients going to either the emergency room or to the outpatient services center, not being able to find the correct entrance and having to be redirected, which again, for us, is a patient's safety concern. So we're just trying to address those concerns globally with some of the signage. And then, I think that was it. I'll move on. So we're going to review three different signs. I'll back up for a second. Sign designation C would be the emergency canopy. That would be the entrance to the emergency room itself for the waiting area. We'd also look at today the physical, the physicians' group entrance, which is considered the outpatient services side of the building. And I'll show you how they're oriented on the site with the building as well. And then also, finally, sign B would be the logo at the rear of the building. I think the logo at the rear of the building, we understand, may not completely play into patient's safety as much as just clearly identifying NCH facility in general from Walden Center Drive. May already be familiar with the site location. It's on US 41. The building abuts to US 41 and shares an access drive with Diamond Oaks. We are just south of Walden Center and the WCI complex. And then Walden Center Drive is on our west side. Opposite of that is Pelican Landing. The three different locations of signage we talked about in the beginning, the emergency room canopy signage, the physicians' group signage, and then the logo sign. And this image here helps kind of depict some of the access points. The shared driveway is just to the bottom right-hand corner of the building. And then the entrance to the rear of the site is actually somewhat masked by the distance I wrote on there, which is completely my fault when I put that together, so I apologize. Some of the distances that I placed on the plan to give you a little bit of a reference. The canopy at the emergency entrance, which is letter C, and that would be a sign that we would prefer to have illuminated 24 hours a day. It is a red lettering sign. That one specifically would provide patrons, or visitors, or patients for that matter, a way to find the proper entrance to the emergency room and differentiate it specifically from what would be considered the outpatient services.
Is that a round sign?
It would be mounted on the canopy. So the driveway canopy currently has one small emergency sign on the very end, which unfortunately is only visible when you're driving in from the shared drive at Diamond Oaks. So if you're parking in the rear, or if you by chance had came in off of Walden Center, it can be somewhat confusing to find that entrance. Case in point, from the letter provided by the facility, they've had patients trying to enter at the ambulance entrance, which we definitely want to avoid as much as possible. Letter E signifies the same type of signage. These would be canopy signage, and that would be the signage that we'd want to have turned off at 6 o'clock every evening and during non-business hours. And then sign B would be the logo on the back of the building, just to help clearly identify the building from Walden Center Drive. So what I did here is I went through and I went out to the site and I took some photographs to give you an idea of what it would look like before and after. This is from standing at the very far southeastern corner of the site. The top-left image shows the canopy as it is today. It has the small emergency entrance sign we talked about when you enter from the Diamond Oaks shared access. We would propose to add the additional one on the side there. I don't... does this have a pointer as well? Everybody understand?
I can see.
You've got the high-power laser today. This sign here would be the one that we'd look to add. And then the opposite side of the canopy, if I was walking from any of the rear parking area, I'd have to pass the shadowed area that you see there on the screen is the canopy for the outpatient services entrance. And this can kind of help you see how this could be very confusing in some instances if there's not a sign leading you towards that main entrance down the public right-of-way. This is sign type E. It's a little harder to see, but again, before and after what the intent of the signage would be. Currently, I'm standing just at the driveway entrance when I took this photo from the Diamond Oaks, looking towards the parking to the west and the entrance to the outpatient services. That would, that sign would then help bring you into that outpatient services, signifying as NCH physicians' group. And if I was parking in the rear, this is what I would see walking up as well. So I knew exactly where I was going. And then finally, the sign type B, which would be the logo on the back of the building. This would help just clearly identify the Naples Community Hospital building for patrons that are driving down Walden Center Drive, and hopefully keep them from missing and having to turn around or try to find their way back out on the US 41 to come in the entrance.
That illuminated that one?
That one would be illuminated. That one would be illuminated and turned off at the same time. And that's all I had. Turn it over to the staff, or any questions for me?
Yeah, the package I got did not have sign C at all. Is that... When was that added? There's what I received.
And I had looked through the packet at length last night, and I think it was a little bit confusing. There was a elevation...
There's a little tiny picture that says emergency, but nowhere has it indicated where it's going.
Yeah, I think that's what the confusion was. I tried to clarify today where it's going to be placed. It shows the sign in here and does not...
Again, it would be nice to have all this information correctly presented prior to this meeting.
Understood, sir.
I'd like to further make some more comments relative to this. When it was continued the last time because of the complications of understanding what was presented, it was suggested that wayfinding signs would probably be adequate. For example, absent the emergency sign. For example, two signs on the overhang or the port of share are really not needed. You can... If you're coming in from that back...
From Walden Center.
Walden Center Drive. You're north of the building. You can just... You have to turn down the parking lot to get to this. And you've got... If you come in off of 41, southbound and turn in, you have some nice wayfinding signs there pointing to exactly what you're wanting. And to me, it appears what you're requesting is just advertising signs for your facility and not wayfinding.
I personally wouldn't classify it as that only due to the fact of how many patients they've had walk into the outpatient services center with even some ground signs that are currently there and installed, looking for the emergency room.
Well, you need more ground signs.
And vice versa.
You need more ground wayfaring signs, similar to what you have out there. Only additional ones. You don't need lighted signs on a canopy, in my opinion.
Understood. We actually added additional verbiage and signage to the ground signs that you can see in that image right there, and they're still having trouble with patients not coming to the right locations. And as you walk through the site, I walked it myself and could see... It can be very confusing and disorienting when you're coming in, especially if you're there to see a loved one in the emergency room. You're parking and you're in a hurry. You're not always paying attention to exactly where the entrance is when you pull in. So these types of things could help draw you into the proper location.
I agree. The emergency sign is probably required because it's not very clear.
Understood.
But the other three signs, I would suggest...
I completely agree with the logo sign. I think that, you know, again, I iterated at the beginning. That's not a patient's safety. I think that's just to help draw people to the building.
It's 520 feet from...
540 feet or something like that to the residents.
Is there anything else that you wish to present at this time?
No, sir.
This is O for the city.
Only if you want it.
I do understand the confusion. I will say I put an emphasis on those additional signs because I thought the emergency was quite clear to understand. So I do apologize for that confusion. So again, the request is for additional wall signage for this facility. And I think you all know the location off of Walden Center Drive and 41, heading north. The reason for their special exception... Based on their letter of need for signage, as well as their letter from their nurse stating that people cannot find the emergency facilities, additional signage would make it easier for wayfinding for those patients. In addition, off of Walden Center Drive, they did not have a sign. So for identification purposes, from Walden Center Drive, because of the great distance between the building and the street, it would make it easier for wayfinding for the patients as well. And so to clarify the sizing, the wall sign logo would be 118 square feet. And then the canopy signage for NCH physician group would be 26 and 1/2 square feet. These are elevations to show what it would look like. So the special exception criteria... Oh, here's the site plan as well. The building is located on a 300 by 740-foot parcel. And because of the building orientation within the US 41 overlay district, the building is oriented towards US 41. In addition, on US 41, they had to have a pedestrian area as well as a bus stop with a canopy. So because of the building orientation and vision obstructions, there is a need to have an entrance off of Walden Center Drive, which has inadequate signage. This building is a multi-use occupancy. However, it's only one single occupant, so they are not provided additional signage per our code, while many other jurisdictions will provide you that opportunity. And because there are many uses, it makes it a little bit confusing which specific entrance you need to access. We state this as the minimum measure needed as they could be requesting an additional wall sign off of the north side. They could be requesting additional signs within the interior of the property. However, they're not provided them by right because it's only a single occupant. And then, as I mentioned, the placement of the building, the distance from residences, which is greater than 500 feet from Pelican Landing, that this would be in harmony with the neighborhood. And as we conditioned, originally, we thought decreasing the illumination, but turning it off at 6 o'clock would be satisfactory as well. So our recommendation is approval of this request for this specific user and this specific case. So this will not provide them additional signage. If they change companies, this would not provide that company the same benefit. And they cannot change the verbiage as well. All of their sign permits need to be in within six months to be approved or else the approval would be null and void. They need to meet Chapter 6, which would require our sign code to have open space on 10% of each sign. And they cannot increase in square footage. And then anything in addition, like I said, would require additional approvals. And I think that is it.
Is there any rebuttal by the applicant? What is your wish?
I'd just like to ask one question if I could. Is that...
Was there a public comment? Wait a second. I'm sorry. Public comment? No.
There being no public here. Could I ask why the sign on the side of the building that says NCH, rather than a monument sign at Walden...
Walden Center.
Walden Center Drive. I've got walnut somehow in my mind. And coming in the driveway there. I mean, if you... That's the kind of sign that's typical along that street. And you'd see it right at the street, and you'd see it from either direction. So I don't understand... That's the only sign that I have any issue with. But why you would have a big sign up there that maybe somebody would miss? And why instead you wouldn't put a monument sign right where the driveway is? That, to me, would make more logical sense.
It could possibly be cost prohibitive getting cabling and conduit that far of a distance because of the orientation of the building and some of the requirements for the US 41 corridor. We were forced to pull the building very close to the 41 frontage and as far away from that end and also maintain our building out from underneath some of the easements for the power lines that run through the retention space in the back. So we strayed away from doing a monument sign because it's kind of a maintenance issue as well. Definitely an option. Not saying it's completely without of the realm of possibilities to do that in lieu of a logo sign.
Look, to the extent that we're supposed to keep our approval to wayfaring, wayfaring needs, it strikes me that a more helpful thing for drivers going down Walden Center Drive would be something there that would catch your eye as you're going by.
People wouldn't go down Walden Center Parkway. I live right there.
They're usually...
So do I. I mean, I go down there all the time.
People... Well, yeah, if you go to Publix or something like that, you go Walden Center. But I've never seen an ambulance or anything go down Walden Center. It comes off of 41. And I can see the sign on the building, but I can't see, like, the chairman brought out, you know, 50,000 volts. But if they turn that thing off at 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock, that's fine. And you do have a sign back there by Walden Center. There is a sign by the driveways when you go...
I've never seen that.
Huh?
I've never seen that.
Yeah, yeah.
I go down there all the time. Must not be very effective.
Anyway, I don't see anything wrong with a monument sign.
Anyway, I don't have any other big issues. I don't see how that's a better alternative, but that's just personal stuff.
Is there any further comments?
I'd like to just repeat a little bit what I said earlier.
Please.
There are Walden wayfinding signs on... Go back to your site plan, please.
They're all around the parking lot.
Well, as you come in, you have to know to turn right.
To the site plan, please?
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. There's a sign right there that says NCH. Turn down this driveway. It also says the physician's group is down there, too.
Yes, sir.
And right here, coming in this entrance, you have a sign right there that tells you the physician's group is down here.
To the left or...
To the left. That's right.
And that was the additional ground sign that we put in to help with some of that?
Well, that works, and it's very effective. And the emergency, which I had no information on, I understand where that's needed, or sign C. But signs B on the building, I don't think should be allowed if it's out of the standard require... Or allowable for buildings. Also, the two signs right there on physician's group, that has no relationship to Walden Center Drive because you can't see it from there. That small of a sign.
And I agree with that. It was more for helping wayfind when you're getting out of your vehicle. When you walk the site on foot and through some of the public sidewalks, it definitely helps draw you in a bit further because all of the ground signs are faced out. They're single-sided.
I'm pretty old and very confused sometimes going into medical units.
I'm pretty confused sometimes, too.
Sir, I was there this morning, and I could find exactly where to go with the small signs. Those lit signs.
I completely...
B and E, I don't think should be approved. That's my personal opinion.
What you're saying is just that D...
B, Baker.
B and E.
E. The two E signs on the canopy, which are lit signs, and then the B sign, which is a great big NCH sign right there on the building.
Would it make a difference if they were not lit? At all?
If they're not allowed by the code, why an exception?
The exception is this use, and I think as the staff had explained before, isn't clearly identified in the land development code. This is kind of a very unique situation that that code doesn't allow us the proper amount of signage to properly sign this building and fall in line with the Florida guidelines for healthcare design and construction. At the end of the day, the FGI guidelines and the state of Florida, ACA, will always result to the local municipalities, of course, but we want to try to stay within those guidelines as best as possible.
Robert, I think you live out there.
Yeah.
What?
I go along with the staff proposed with those three signages. I think that'll do the trick. I don't think there's any harping with that. With the condition that the signage get... Would you propose, turn it off at what time?
6:00 PM.
And that... I think that's fine. I think that'll take care of the situation.
I respect your opinion.
Thank you, James.
Is there any other comments? Everybody has said everything they want to say. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept staff's recommendation with the change and time noted. Okay?
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Committee Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Committee Member... I'm sorry. Chairman Kurlender?
Yep.
Committee Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Committee Member Worster?
Yes.
Committee Member Insirpi?
Yes.
And Committee Member Craig?
Yes.
Thank you all for your time today.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there any further business to come before the board? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.
Face closed.
And may you enjoy your trip.
Thank you, thank you.